All right. Good evening, everyone. We will call to order now the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 Liberty Lake City Council meeting. We will start by taking a roll call, after which we will talk about the 2025 budget. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Cargill's here. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn, I believe, is on the way or on, he's not online, is he? No. Okay. So we will make a note when Councilmember Dunn arrives. We do need a motion to excuse the mayor who will not be with us tonight.
I will make a motion to excuse Mayor Kaminski.
Sorry.
All right. The motion is by Councilmember Ball, the second by Councilmember Kennedy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right. We will proceed to our 2025 budget review and workshop, the purpose of which is to go through the budget again and entertain amendments and changes and motions for changes to the budget as it has been printed. So Kyle, do you want to kick us off?
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Protem Cargill and council. And so, yeah, so tonight is, is kind of exactly what Mayor Protem just alluded to. We have made it through 200 plus pages of budget documents. So thank you, everybody, for going on that journey with us. And then tonight is going to be focused on some of the stuff that came up over the course of our first review. We'll bring back potential changes, amendments, ads, and seek consensus amongst council to memorialize any of those changes. And then we'll bring back a final product for a second read on December 17th. And so before you, one thing I wanted to get out of the way is this is hot off the presses. What you, what you have in front of you is the Trailhead fee schedule. And we have the 2025 prices and we have the 2024 prices. And so these were just released basically as a function of we now have everybody else's information for 2025. And we are responding as such. And so on the 2025 prices, you're going to see a lot of these daily rates, these, these nine hole rates for a cart, green fee, range balls. So a lot of these are just incremental changes based on what we have seen the market do and propose for 2025 for our neighboring courses. And so we have a $2 increase for adult green fee, $2 increase for senior. A lot of these you'll see are these very incremental increases that all add up to, based on 2024 data, about $75,000 of additional revenue. And so, so I, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to get this kind of in under the gun. This is usually something we do a little bit out of cycle. Once we get everybody's information back and bring this forward, either in January or February. But being that we have this information, it's all the better to include it in the budget for next year. So are there any questions on this fee schedule? And I know you guys just saw this. But, but we literally just, just got this towards the tail end of last week. Yes.
Councilmember Ball.
What, what is trail fee? Just trail fee?
Trail fee is if you are not golfing. And so you have that. And then you also have if you bring your own cart.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Kyle, you can, when we get to the budget for Trailhead, you can walk us through where that extra revenue is.
Yeah. So this, I, I, I literally have not even updated our revenues, but we can walk through that together on what we anticipate the increase to be.
Okay. So unless there are any, is, unless there's anybody opposed, what would probably be best, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark and Kyle, is to just go through fund by fund and see if there are any changes or any amendments that anyone wants to make and then proceed to the next one. Does that work for everyone?
I'm comfortable with that.
Any, anybody opposed to that? Okay. All right. So let's start then with general fund one, the legislative account.
Number that.
It is page 48. In your budget binder, page 48. And then the detailed part is on 49. Are there any changes, amendments to the legislative one? One once, one twice?
One.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Van Orman.
Always wondered if we should be putting in a newsletter like we had done in the past. And I know we need to be careful of doing that during the time of elections. Would this now be the date to do it? Because I don't believe that.
So we, Mark may be able to expand on this a little bit. We, we discussed about potentially quarterly flyers through the Community Engagement Commission. I don't know if, if you're thinking kind of along the same lines of that.
I am.
Okay. And so we, we had that in the budget for 2024. I think Community Engagement decided to go in a different direction. For last year, we still have supplies for them next year. And so we could potentially use that as a test case for 2025 to expand upon it. But I think you're, if you can elaborate on what you want that to look like, we can discuss.
Just making sure that the public engagement has enough funds to be able to do that. Even if it's once a quarter, getting the community knowing exactly what is happening within the city and how they can get involved.
Yeah. So that's an initiative that we would have to bring back to the commission. They're not currently contemplating creating a newsletter. But that doesn't mean that they can't. I, I believe the budget as it currently is presented has some allocated dollars for mailouts. I'm not sure if it's quarterly or some other frequency, but.
It is not quarterly as it's currently constructed.
Can I ask one thing, Mark? Do we utilize Splash Newspaper in that capacity?
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
We, we have essentially an entire page that's content created by city staff.
And you feel that that's getting your word across?
I, I believe so. I mean, it's for, you know, we have an annual subscription or not subscription, but an annual fee that we pay to Splash for marketing. And as a result of that, get that column inch, whatever the number is, it's effectively a full page. And so we, we believe on a monthly basis, that gives us plenty of opportunity to get the word out on whatever initiative is being discussed. I don't think David's here, but he can elaborate on the kinds of material that we routinely put in there. And, and, and believe that that's an effective distribution cadence and method without having to recreate that using city resources.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any changes to the legislative fund? All right. Hearing none, we will go on to page 50, the executive portion of the general fund. Questions, comments, amendments? Okay, I'll, I'll jump in here. I'm, I'm going to make an amendment, a motion to reduce the GSI membership to 10,000, which is the same that we pay to the Valley Chamber and which would put us in line with both and reallocate that difference to the library capital fund. So this would be account number 558-704900 on page 52. So we would be lowering the GSI amount to 10,000, which we were told that's their standard cost for their membership of the cities. And then the 15 extra is what we pay for being on their various boards and for the economic development piece. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Dunn.
Okay. You know, I can't tell. So the difference of the $5,000 you're anticipating is the dues for being on some of these.
15, 15. Yeah. Yeah. So it would go from 25 to 10.
Right.
And when Gary was here at the last meeting, he said 10 was their, their standard membership fee. And then the 15 was the economic development piece.
Question mark. You know, I'm wondering if, you know, a $10,000, I call it buy-in is something GSI would even consider.
As its base fee, I believe so. Like I think the, the question is, is the 15,000, which is essentially the city's budget for economic development activity, marketing, prospecting, that kind of thing. We don't, we don't have an economic development office in the city. And so is the 15,000 that we're paying to GSI providing comparable value in return?
I guess I'd ask your opinion then, if we were to say, Mark, we're going to give the, the council is going to give 15,000 to the staff to go forth and develop economically. Could anything be done?
Something could be done at the order of magnitude that is being done for that fee through GSI. It wouldn't come close.
I think Mike, the reason why I'm proposing this is not necessarily to replace it with something that we would do, but rather because the economic development piece, as we've asked numerous times, has not necessarily been there for Liberty Lake over the past three or four or five years. They, they pointed to a specific economic development piece, I believe it was 2018, 2019. But since then, there's not been one specifically for us. So Councilmember Kurtz.
Why have a follow-up to that, what you just said? But then also my question mark would be, would the city staff's recommendation fall in line with this? Or would you recommend that we continue at our current contribution to GSI?
So certainly for this year, I would recommend that we continue with the current contribution. If it's council's desire for the staff to look at other options for economic development, we could certainly do that and put a plan in place or bring a proposal sometime in 2025 to potentially replace that activity with something else. I don't know, sitting here off the top of my head, what that would look like, but we could certainly put some effort into bringing something back to propose to you.
And if I can follow up, are, we're under agreement with GSI now. So how would, if we reduce this starting January 1st, how would that affect the agreement that we're under currently?
Well, so the agreement expires on December 31st. The plan is to bring back another agreement. That would obviously have to be amended if, if we chose to decrease the, the the payment to them. But I, specifically how that would look, I would just need to get into the agreement, talk with GSI and figure that out.
Councilmember Ball.
So what, what do we get for the first 10,000? I mean, what is, is that just to buy in to be part of GSI?
So that's membership essentially. And the way that, the, the way that GSI is set up, they are at, at a county level, the Associate Development Organization, which you heard Gary describe when he presented, which essentially plugs us into federal and state funding for a variety of different things. And that doesn't guarantee that we'll get any of that funding, but it plugs us into the mechanism that distributes that funding. And so that's the importance of membership.
And so the extra 15,000 then is kind of a economies of scales type situation, right? We're getting more because we're part of a bigger.
But I, I think, I think there's an argument to be made for the value of that 15,000 and what it returns to the city. And, and that can be discussed and there's legitimate, there's legitimate conversation to be had about can that 15,000 be used independently of the efforts that GSI is undertaking on behalf of the city to return equal or higher value. Sitting here, I, I, you know, I could spitball some stuff, but I, we, we could certainly put some effort into bringing back a proposal to identify some possibilities. But that's a discussion that can be had.
Councilmember, let's first go to Councilmember Spencer, Kennedy or Van Orman if they had anything. Okay. Councilmember Curtis.
I think I'm more in favor of what Mark you just suggested is bringing something back, a proposal for us to look at to see what other options there are. Because I think even though it's attractive to put the money towards the library capital fund, I think that's where Mayor Protem said. I do think we also need to have a focus on economic development. And so if there are other options or other ways to fund that, or if it is GSI, if that's what we come back to, I would like to look at that in the early part of 2024 so that we can make a decision about whether we continue to contribute to GSI at that level, at a different level, or we do something completely different. But I think economic development is important.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Good point. What would be the timeframe you feel that you'd be able to get back to us? Is it in this year or would be in 2025?
We, we would get back to you with what exactly? Just a, a proposal that I described?
Yeah.
It, it would be in the first quarter of 2025.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. The motion is to take the GSI membership number down to 10,000 and reallocate. And that comes from 558-704900, reallocate the remaining 15 to the library capital fund. There's been a second by Councilmember Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four, three. Okay. Anything else in executive?
I just asked a follow-up question though, but are we still bringing back that proposal with what to do with the other 15? Because I think that would be my ask is to still continue to focus on economic development. I guess we just put it in the capital fund though for the library.
Well, regardless, we can come back with some proposals about how to internally provide the economic development services that GSI was previously providing.
Okay.
Through 24 was providing.
Do you want to make that motion, Councilmember Kurtz? Or do we need a motion?
No.
No. Okay. Councilmember Ball.
Okay. So wait a minute. So the 15,000 then that we're not going to give to GSI, it will go to the library capital fund? Or are we going to have to rework that the first of the year or?
The vote was to reallocate to library capital. Yes. Yes.
I do have a one quick question, Mark, regarding the splash agreement. I noticed that it went up to 18, five. I was trying to determine on their website, is that the standard cost for 12 full-page ads? Or are we getting a better deal than that? So.
I, I wish I could answer that.
We are getting a kind of a nominal discount, I would say.
Okay. Yeah. So it is lower than what it would be.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else in executive? Okay. Now we're on to page 53, finance and administrative. Questions, comments, amendments? Hearing none, I'll make one. And that is to strike the 2.43 million fund transfer from 59720001 that would go to the library capital fund and reallocate that to the Trailhead Fund, which is fund 338 to pay off Trailhead. Or at least make it somewhat payoff.
Can you please repeat that motion?
Yes. The motion is to strike the 2.43 million fund transfer that comes from 59720001, which right now is going to the library capital fund and reallocate that to the Trailhead Fund 338 for the purposes of paying down the Trailhead debt.
Would you please refer to the page?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
56.
56. Thank you. So you will see it at the bottom of 56, four up from the bottom, which is a 2.43 or 2.427 million transfer out of the general fund into the library fund. So the motion that I'm making is to keep that transfer, but the transfer would go to the Trailhead Fund for the purposes of making a down payment. That, that is fund 338.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. A motion and a second. Discussion. Question?
Yes.
Could you estimate the penalty fee the city would pay for making such a payment?
It would be on the order of, I think it's right at 100,000.
So we'd be disposing without benefit to the city, $100,000.
If we chose to pay it next year.
Kyle, follow up?
Yeah.
How much would we save in interest by doing this? The last meeting, when we talked about the entire amount, we'd be saving 2.8 million dollars in interest if we did the entire thing. So I'm guessing since this is roughly half, it'd be roughly half that?
It's, it's inverse. So you, you apply the principle to the last payment of the amortization schedule. And so we would be knocking potentially seven years or so off the back end. And so those interest rates would be smaller, but they would still be substantial and probably on the order of greater than that, I would say.
Greater than 100,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Additional discussion? Councilmember Curtis.
I think my concern is that we, it's my concern. I think by taking money out of the budget for the library, which we have a plan coming back, we've asked for the Kennedy, I'm trying to think of what, yeah, the, the plan for the library, the master, facilities master plan for that to come back. By taking this money out, we won't be able to fund it. And I think that's well known to everybody at the DIES. So I think that if we want to make an adjustment, if we want to pay off Trailhead and we decide later that we don't want to do anything with the library, I would rather have that discussion next year when we have the plan. So we know what it is. We are ruling out. Otherwise, there was no point in doing that master facilities plan. So my, my vote would definitely be to keep the money as it is now in the current proposed budget. And if we decide not to go with the library later, we can adjust the budget then. But I don't like the idea of taking this out because I think it's a slippery slope and I think we'll take it all out and we won't build a library.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy.
I really struggle with pulling that out because I think the ripple effect is changes what we already put in motion here to see what we're going to do if, if it was pulled out. I, I know it's just a paper entry, so we can always make a budget adjustment or something like that. But I think what it does is it guts moving forward, in my opinion, of where we're going to get the funds for the library. Now, if there's somewhere else that Kyle can pull the rabbit out of the hat to show where that can come from, then I, I would support something like that. But I'm concerned how that will look.
Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I'll speak in the favor of the motion. I've, I've been clear with my position on this from the beginning. I, I believe that we wouldn't have this cash sitting here had we paid cash for Trailhead. So I, I think our priority should be to pay off that building sooner and before we even look at building, building a library. Whether that's building onto the existing one or, or putting it into the current building that we own next door to the, the PD. So, so I think, I, I think from a standpoint of priority, this should be a higher priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Well, I am one of those that wants their cake and they want to eat it too. I would propose that we put in 500,000 to Trailhead to get it paid off. Next year, we put the rest of it and pay it off. Is there any way that we can take 500,000? Do we have that anyplace in here to pay off Trailhead?
Potentially. So we would use that towards kind of as we described, you pay off kind of the backend and you shorten the life of the loan essentially. And so, yes, and it's just, it lives in the proposed ending fund balance of general fund. And so I, I, I think we veered away from historically using the general fund to make payments to Trailhead, but this loan is still in its infancy. And I mean, we finished the project last year. So it's really council's prerogative on how we want to attack the loan repayment versus other competing interests of the city.
Okay. Then I would counteract that and make out a motion to utilize $500,000 out of the ending fund balance to put on Trailhead Golf Course to get it started, to get paid off. Because we've got to do it in $500,000 increments.
So we already have a motion on the floor. So are you wanting to amend the motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. So can you restate that?
I would like to go ahead and take 500,000 out of the ending fund balance and apply that to Trailhead Golf Course for payoff.
Okay. I think that sounds like a different amendment.
I don't know if I want to.
So if, if I may say that, then I, I think we can resolve the current motion on the floor and then you can propose that.
Yeah.
On the heels.
Okay. Sounds great.
And I'll just, Councilmember Ball.
What's the balance on Trailhead?
It's 5.7 and change.
And the fee to pay it off, if we pay, well, paid it off, even if we paid us 500,000, what would the fee be for, you know, a, a early pay?
It's a 2% prepayment penalty. So 2% of whatever we pay.
So I'll just make a couple of brief comments here. One, when we adopted the Trailhead Bond, we made it clear that we were going to, as soon as we possibly could, pay down that debt. The city is in debt. I believe it was, Councilmember Van Orman can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in debt for the first time in the history of our city because of Trailhead. Is that accurate?
No. No. We, we financed Trailhead Golf Course to begin with. We financed.
But to this amount?
Oh, yes. We, we've had several.
Okay. My, my point in making this motion is right now, each citizen in our city, I did the quick math, it was about $450 in debt to pay off Trailhead. And before I even thought about this, I talked to Kyle and I said, what is it going to cost us in terms of the prepayment penalty? Versus what are we going to save if we were to pay it all off? And the savings is overwhelming compared to what the prepayment penalty would be. So I believe we have a responsibility as a council to come up with a plan. If it's not this, then something else to pay it off as soon as possible. We've got the money sitting in the general fund. And the consensus now of the council seems to be, well, let's spend it on something else and not spend it on the thing that we already put our citizens in debt for. And I would just respectfully argue that I think that's the exact wrong way to go about this. To me, you get the city out of debt first and then you go and build more things in the city. And this would go part of the way to making that happen. We would still be in debt by about two and a half million, but we would not be in as much debt. And then we could come back next year and pay the rest of the debt. We have no plan, I believe, at least right now, on the library that's going to get four votes in the building that we're talking about. And so if we're not going to spend it on the library, at least not at the very moment, let's spend it on something that can be useful and that is paying down the debt that the citizens owe, is my feeling behind this. Anybody else want to chime in? Councilmember Kennedy?
Go ahead. I don't disagree with the idea of making a plan about Trailhead, but I feel like we're doing this in a very compressed time when we haven't actually talked about how to make a plan. And I don't know that we're going to do that in the next 15 minutes of this budget session. So again, I'm not opposed to coming up with a plan. I don't think tonight and taking out the money out of the budget is the right way to do that. I think that coming back again next year, where we can actually sit down and have a conversation about what those plans might be and get into the nitty gritty of the details of the finances, particularly if we have a restaurant that will also help to pay off Trailhead. I don't think we have all of the information at the moment and I would rather have the budget the way it is so that we can make an educated decision with the master facilities plan and how we want to pay off Trailhead. I think it's presumptive to say that there aren't votes for things. I, I don't think we want to be putting that out there that we know how people are going to vote. So I would, I'll be voting opposed to the motion.
Councilmember Kennedy.
In our last meeting two weeks ago, what we were able to bring up is that in the past, how we've looked at doing something with the library and community center. There was actually three options could be there is to build something on the land we already have, build something on the existing library or continue on where we are. Now, we're not going to get this resolved now. But one of the options was to build on the existing library. And based on today's figures of $625 a square foot to build a library that Spokane Valley just did, that was $3.1 million to build 5,000 square feet on that building. Now, we don't know, could we do that there? Because we haven't got into the, we, we may not be able to do that. Now, we don't know, could we do that there? Because we haven't got into the, we we may not be able to do that. But we know that's three million dollars of hard money. If we blow that by two million dollars and it costs us five million. We would still have three million dollars left over to do what? Put it towards Trailhead. So what I'm trying to look at is that. Why can't I get as much as this pie? To make. What the city has been after for twenty some odd years. And still within a period of, I think, two years, I've mentioned to Kyle, that the difference in that three million dollars, if we if we put five million dollars into that. Building, which which we don't know if we can or not. Keep that in mind, that may be null and void. But we have three million dollars to put towards Trailhead. And relatively within probably a two-year period of time, we can come up with a difference. To pay off Trailhead completely. I just want to throw that out.
Any other, uh, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I I think um this is a very simple equation. I think we have to determine as a council, what is a higher priority? That do we, do we need a new library at this moment? Or do we need to pay off debt? And what is the most responsible thing to do? I realize that, you know, uh, on a personal level, we can go out and max out our credit cards. And and take that money that's in our savings or our checking account and we can go spend that or we can be responsible. And pay those credit cards off. That's the responsible thing to do. We we put our citizens into debt. We do have the money to to pay down that debt, perhaps all of it. Um, so we just have to make a very simple decision. I don't believe this is something we have to make elaborate plans for. We need to decide what is a higher priority, pay off debt? Or spend spend that money on something else and remain in debt. In the meantime, we still have no plan to uh to pay down that uh Trailhead. At an accelerated rate like we uh told the ci- citizens upfront. We said we were going to pay that off as quickly as possible. Currently, we are only making the minimum payment.
Councilmember Ball.
I appreciate what you just said, Councilman Spencer. But the thing is, today is December fourth and I wish we'd have these conversations way. Prior to this because. I thought we were pretty much there. This was the budget. This is what we are going to do. Um, to change it right now, it's just, it's. It's December fourth, it's six thirty. We don't have time to have a a intelligent conversation about this, so um. I don't want to change it right now. I'm I'm would be opposed to the um motion.
Councilmember Kurtz.
And I hear what um Councilmember Spencer is saying. Um, but if I had known, you don't know everything, when I voted to um. Voted for Trailhead, as someone who doesn't golf, had never been to Trailhead. Um, if I had to known then that it was a choice between the library or Trailhead, I wouldn't have voted for Trailhead. I'm not a golfer. Um, but I think the community, um, there are more people that in the community that use the library than there are that use Trailhead. So I do not think it is as simple as paying off debt. Um, I think you can have a mortgage on the house and you can buy a car. Um, I think that plenty of people do those things with their budgets. You can also go on a vacation. You can do all those things with the analogies that we're talking about. But I think as far as putting together a plan tonight, we are not putting together a plan. It is not simple tonight. Um, I'm happy to have this discussion when we talk about it in January, if we can get to that point. Um, but if we want to be intentional about putting forward a plan, put it on the agenda, our next agenda items. We'll do it in January. We'll come up with something. We'll make a budget amendment if we need to. But um, I agree with Councilmember Ball that. I, in process over the last five years. When we get to this point in the budget, we aren't making huge changes. So this feels a little bit out of order with. Um, our process and procedure, though it's probably not written down anywhere. Um, but a big change like this, I agree that we should have been talking about this a while ago.
Additional thoughts, comments? I would just say uh that I don't think it's an either or proposition. I think we can do both things. And to me, the the reason why I say that is because by doing, by paying off Trailhead. We saved the city almost three million dollars in interest. That is money that can go to the library. That is money that we will have over the next ten, fifteen years to put towards more city priorities. And because we've got the debt right now, if we just keep the debt as it is. The city and citizens in the city will pay about three million dollars more in interest. So that is why I'm making this motion tonight. Yes, Councilmember, let's go to Councilmember Van Orman and then back to Councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, from my understanding, we have three years to go ahead and pay off Trailhead Golf Course.
We have more than that.
Okay.
We have twenty years right now.
But we have three years for the deadline for us to be able to go ahead and start paying it off. Correct?
Well, we could do it today or we could.
Yeah.
With the penalty.
With the penalty and oddly enough, it was two days ago that the prepayment penalty window started. So December first, twenty twenty-four. Started the prepayment window of two percent. And then every two years after that, it gets reduced by one percent.
Okay, so if we paid paid off five hundred thousand this year. Next year, we pay it off a little bit more and then the next year, we pay it off. Three years. And we get our cake and we eat it too.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I think there's a lot of different ways to slice the cake here. And I think that I agree with saving money on interest. Wholeheartedly, if we can do that. I'm simply saying that we are not going to come up with a plan tonight that satisfies all of our questions and gives us all the information to make an informed decision. About how to do it. So totally on board with the concept of how to do that. And I think we could have a good workshop on that in January. Um, probably more than one workshop because I don't think it's as simple as everybody's making it out to be. Um.
Any other, Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm really struggling with uh, time is of the essence here. Here we are, as this Councilball mentioned on the on the fourth. Uh, we have had discussions leading up to this. Uh, but I think there's, as I mentioned earlier, there's so many ripple effects that this could affect down down the road. Um. I I don't see how we can accomplish that tonight. But I do believe we can accomplish that after the first year. If I was confident, this council would commit to do something, let's say, in January. To address this because by then we're going to know better where we are with the library, with the land, with the existing library. And what and what cannot be done. Uh, but my concern would be is that I I I would drive me crazy. If this gets kicked down the road again. We talked about in January and then some other priority comes up, you know, this is a council meeting. The council determines what we're going to talk about. Does not driven by the mayor's office or staff. They bring to us what is important we have to deal with. And we have to also look long range of additional things. This is all part of it. We have to work together as a team instead of this division that I see has happened over the last thirty years. We cannot continue in that direction. I am confident that we could be something with the library. And for me, the library is we add on for a community center. That is what the analysis came up with. And I also believe that we can have a policy that will work. To pay off Trailhead in a relatively short period of time.
Any other comments? Councilmember Ball.
I mean, it's minor, but when we do get a restaurant in there, there's going to be income from that too, that I I'm assuming will go towards the payoff of the. Of the uh Trailhead debt, correct?
You need any excess revenue from golf operations?
I mean, I know it's not going to be. It's not going to solve the entire problem, but it's it's going to be a great asset. So, um, and. No, okay, that's it.
Any other comments? All right, so the motion on the floor is to strike the two point four three million fund transfer from five nine seven seven two zero 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 one. To the Library Capital Fund and reallocate that to the Trailhead Fund, uh, which is number three three eight. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails two to five. Are there any other um changes or questions about the finance and administrative piece? I believe Councilmember Van Orman, you were going to make a motion?
If this is the place to make that motion.
Well, we certainly can, yeah.
Uh, to. Basically to go ahead and take five hundred thousand dollars. And uh, out of the ending fund balance and put it towards Trailhead and that would be on top of the minimum payment. Of what you're already making.
Correct.
So we're not talking about five hundred thousand, we're talking about nine hundred thousand for this year.
Second.
Yeah, okay, can you repeat it? I couldn't hear you.
Yeah.
Sorry. My voice. I know, I'm. Here we go. Uh, to take the five hundred thousand dollars needed for the first year. Uh, and pay off with the ending fund balance to Trailhead. That would be on top of the minimum payment that we already make of have four hundred thousand. So it would be nine hundred thousand. Can we do that?
Yeah, so and and. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think the the motion, uh, the intent of the motion was to create an interfund transfer in the general fund of five hundred thousand dollars. To fund three thirty-eight, uh, Trailhead Improvements Project for an additional prepayment of the loan.
Correct.
Has there been a second on that?
Yes, I said.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
So I'll just say similar to what I said the last time. I think happy to have this discussion when we can get through all the details, get the facts. And and something in front of us that we can all sit and take some time to look at. Totally open to having that discussion. Again, I completely support um paying it off early. Um, but I think that we aren't prepared tonight to do that. Um, but again, if we want to put it on the agenda for January, happy to have that discussion, be a part of it.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Projan. Kyle, where would the five hundred thousand come from?
Uh, just come from the ending fund balance. So we have a budgeted ending fund balance of, I I I believe. Five point five million.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
So we, you would be changing the budget to appropriate five hundred thousand from the bottom, from the fund balance into fund three three eight, correct?
Additional comments? Okay, the motion is to uh take five hundred thousand from the ending fund um balance and transfer it into the Trailhead. Fund, which is fund number three three eight for the purposes of making a prepayment of five hundred thousand.
Question.
Yes.
What pages are you on with the three three eight? What pages are they?
That is. Um, page one oh five.
Which one?
One oh five.
Five.
Thank you.
And so on one oh five, you'll see we have two transfers in. Already, when when you get there, we have two transfers in, one from Real Estate Excise Tax. And the other uh from golf operations, budgeted, if you go look into the twenty twenty-five proposed. We have two transfers in totaling eight hundred thousand dollars. This would increase this amount to one point three million.
Anything else? Okay, everyone's heard the motion, I believe. Does anyone need me to repeat it? Okay.
Would you?
Yes, uh, so the motion is to uh move five hundred thousand from the ending fund balance and transfer it into Trailhead Fund three three eight. For the purposes of a five hundred thousand prepayment. All right, go. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. Okay.
I'm sorry, who voted in favor?
Um, Councilmember Kennedy, Spencer, Cargill and Van Orman.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else on finance and administrative? All right, we will move on to police departments. I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, we will move on to legal services. Any changes in legal services? Page fifty-eight. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to fifty-nine, which is police department. Proposals, amendments, changes, thoughts, questions. Yes, Councilmember Spencer?
Uh, yes, I I'd like to make a motion um to uh round out uh the proposed twenty twenty-five budget for the P D. Uh, to six million, so that would be adding three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight. Um, from the general fund, so a a fund transfer to the P D. Um, I did a little bit of uh research and uh looked at different city budgets. Um, and we we kind of talked about, you know, percentage of a city budget, uh, some other numbers that I looked at. Um, had to do with how much uh cities are spending per resident. Um, so this would actually take us to roughly about four hundred and twenty-five dollars per resident. Um, and um, in the research I was doing, they grouped all P D employees regardless of what they do. Uh, so this would, this would roughly give us one P D employee per five hundred and eighteen residents. Um, for both of these numbers, it put us kind of right in the middle of the pack. And from a standpoint of um. Telling our community that that uh we're listening to them as far as uh public safety goes. Um, I'd like to be even higher than that, but uh for twenty twenty-five, uh, I'm proposing that that we round it out at at six million.
Okay. I will second for the sake of discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Kennedy can second, uh, second for the sake of discussion. Um. Discussion. Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
I have two questions. One, if Chief is here to give us some perspective on um the impact that that would have to the police department. And then two, where would the money come from?
I'll answer the second part first, uh, just just like we did uh five minutes ago with allocating. Additional resources to the Trailhead uh Improvements Project. This would uh come from ending fund balance.
Chief.
Good afternoon or good evening. Um, and thank you for that motion. Um, that additional funding would benefit us tremendously. There's some, there's some discussion between Mark and I potentially about a an additional F T E. That would allow us to do a more evidence-based approach to our staffing and our our department, departmental needs. Um, in addition, um, we know our our fleet, um, a fleet, police fleet is a fleet and um fleets sail. Pretty, pretty fast. And so we've been doing uh some research to um maybe look at some um. Non-traditional way of getting some vehicles recently, uh Deputy Chief Morgan and I and one of our sergeants. Um, so that additional funding would allow us to update our feet, uh fleet. Um, probably to the point where we we that we need now. Um, and there's some other things that it would could um possibly assist with. But, yeah.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Um, so it looks like the math here is about three hundred fifty-four thousand uh extra. Is that enough to, A, not only get a another officer? But also perhaps do a little bit of the fleet on top of that?
So one of the things, you know, these are my.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what, these are like a crush for me. Um, so, you know, with hiring officers. You know, you kind of have that downhill effect. You're going to have to purchase a vehicle.
Yeah.
Have to purchase the firearms and the tasers and the computers. So, you know, those those, the the price starts to add up. But with a little over three hundred thousand, we could add an additional personnel, um, uh, as far as an F T E, as far as an officer. Um, but like I said before, we've had some discussion, um, Mark and I and Darren about. Potentially adding a position like a crime analyst. And that's someone who can statistically. Give us the data that we need to move forward in the right direction, you know. Um, and so we we kicked around some ideas. Mark can probably elaborate on that a little bit more. Um, is there anything you want to add, DC? Um, but yeah, we could, we could add an additional F T as far as a commissioned officer with that and equip that officer. But right now, I think uh our focus is especially moving towards a priority-based budgeting. As well as our line item based budgeting that we do now, it's looking for a a an evidence-based approach to not only adding personnel, but adding equipment. Adding programs and and all these things that we want to do to keep our community safe.
With the three fifty-four, um, and again, I don't know the answer to this question. Um, is that enough to start the motorcycle unit?
Oh, that's more than enough to start a bike unit, yes. Um, we have two officers who are already qualified. So, I mean, purchasing a bike, uh, I've looked at them. I I mean, a brand new bike is about, depending on, you know, the. The style that you purchase and uh the make and model, it's around thirty thousand dollars. I think the Harleys run a little bit more. Um, but that's that's more than enough. Start a program like, uh, but one of the things we've we've been exploring is a traffic unit, not just. The motorcycle program, but a traffic unit to address some of the traffic issues that we've been having uh in the community.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you. Um. If I was a police chief, I'd say, I'll take every dime you can give me.
Well, I will, I'll take every dime.
That's right. I'm not giving it back, you know. It's like as I, as I got older, I said, my son said one time, he said, Daddy. If you're doing so well, will you send the, not take social security? And I said, no, 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 I'm not that stupid. I'm going to take every dime they're going to send. Uh, I can certainly understand where, what we could probably do with that additional. But also, what I'm looking at is that here we are at the end of the year, we're looking at a budget. And I've already looked at what you feel the police department needs. And in my opinion, I I I'm going to give you everything you you need to give public safety. And I think that you and your staff has done an excellent job, continue to do an excellent job of security within this city.
Thank you.
Uh, and so I. And so I I feel that if you felt we needed additional, you would have come to us. And you would have got me saying absolutely yes. Now, we just finished a discussion on how we're gonna give money to pay off Trailhead. And we took five hundred thousand dollars. Well, here we have three hundred and some odd thousand. Some could argue, well, Mike, you're against public safety. No, I'm not. I'm not against public safety. What I'm after is what your recommendation is, and it's been reflected in this budget. So that's kind of where I'm at.
I'll just one comment on that. If you can recall, when during our budget presentation, one of the things that I said I was attempting to do was be fiscally responsible. And I know there's been some concerns about the incremental increases with the PD's budget. And so keeping that in mind, I didn't want to inflate the budget too much. Could we use more money? Yes. Could we use more staffing? Yes. There's some other programs that I'm looking at as well, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would probably start for us, like a traffic camera enforcement program. That was on my list for this year. I removed that because I knew that's going to be a substantial increase in our budget. And so that's one of the things I held off on. There's some other programs that I was looking at potentially, but they increased the budget. You know, to the point where it's like, yeah, do we want to do that this year? Is that something that we can explore in twenty six or twenty seven? But that is one of my priorities is is a program like the camera enforcement program, especially with the change in our our laws recently.
Councilmember Ball.
So my only question, Chief, and I want I fully support public safety, but when I read this whole comment about the vehicles, we've already attributed to replace the three vehicles with the highest mileage or that are ailing pool to pool vehicles. It just seems like there's a lot of vehicles, three new police, the emergency vehicle, it just goes on and on. Do we really need all these vehicles?
Yes.
I mean.
We we have, how many do we have with over a hundred thousand miles now? Do you remember? We we have several that are over a hundred thousand miles now.
Well, yeah, a lot of people drive cars that have over a hundred thousand miles on them.
Yeah, but not law enforcement officers have to respond to emergency calls. And if I have a car that has a hundred and thirty thousand miles and it goes to put on me when you need assistance, that doesn't look very good for the city.
Right. So what is a take-home vehicle now?
Take-home car, so all of officers have take-home vehicles. So that's their assigned vehicle. They take that car home with them, they drive it back. That is a great program. It cuts down on the wear and tear of vehicles. So you're not running vehicles twenty-four hours. If we didn't have take-home cars, our fleet problems would be a lot worse than they are now. The wear and tear on non-take-home vehicles is substantially worse than take-home vehicles.
And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can, by the take-home vehicles, you guys can respond quicker to emergencies, because then you don't have to come back, get your car, and then go to.
Exactly, yeah. And and callouts and overtime shifts and, I mean, it just, it goes, you know, the 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 benefits are there's a plethora of benefits to having take-home vehicles, but like one of the biggest things to me is the wear and tear on the vehicles and coming from an agency or multiple agencies that didn't have those and seeing the condition of vehicles after a year or two versus the take-home vehicles, there's no, I mean, like I said, you're the vehicles that aren't, you're running those twenty-four hours a day. Imagine a car consistently putting on miles twenty-four hours a day, especially a law enforcement vehicle. There's, I mean, the maintenance is super high on those. And so this is a great program for us to cut down on the vehicle maintenance and the wear and tear of the vehicles.
So when the vehicle has lived its life, you know, as a a police car, what do you do with them?
Surplus those.
I beg you.
We surplus those.
Okay.
Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Dunn.
Chief, I want to thank you and all the staff for the hard work that's put into the budget process. You recognize what you have and you recognize what you need. And I think you brought to the council here what you think is necessary. The mayor's incorporated that into the budget. I think, you know, like I think Councilmember Kennedy observed, if there was an extraordinary need that you had a a necessity for, we'd have had it before this. I think to increase the budget to a rounded number does not necessarily seem to reflect your immediate objectives or even your assessments of what the expenses are for your department. So with clarity, I think you've done an excellent job of saying what's needed, and but I can't support an increase like this amendment.
All right, any other comments? We've got about a minute here. Councilmember Spencer.
I'll just hop back in. Again, my my thought here is I would like to actually do more than this, but I I think this is a good step. I grew up here in Liberty Lake. I've seen all the growth. I want Liberty Lake to remain a place where potential criminals don't even think twice about coming because they know they're gonna, they know they're gonna get caught. I I want to, I want to make our PD department so strong that we get to enjoy the 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 reason why we're all living here and continue to to live that way. And so I I feel like the the chief has mentioned just a couple of things that he could do with this money. The the last time we talked about this particular topic, the the topic was brought up regarding a see here about the detectives and that there was a little bit of a backlog. And and I guarantee you, if any one of us had some sort of property crime and it was low on the priority list for the PD and it was in the backlog, you'd be hoping that maybe there was another detective perhaps. So that's that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz. And then we'll we'll take a break and continue this discussion in the seven.
Um. Can I, should I just hold my question then? Because I'm gonna want him to answer it.
Sure. Are you gonna be here for the seven?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we will, the motion is on the floor. Do we need to vote on it or can we continue it?
I think it's probably more appropriate that you vote on the motion relative to that unless you want to table it technically to the next workshop.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this discussion to the next workshop in the seven o'clock meeting.
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Kurtz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously and will adjourn for two minutes. Council meeting. We will start with our invocation given by Councilmember Spencer and follow that with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
For Father in heaven, we are indeed grateful and to be this evening, for this opportunity that we have to gather together as a community. And we are thankful for this time of year, for for the season, for the opportunity that we have to reflect on all the things that we have to be grateful for. And we are thankful for this this chance that we have to get together and to discuss the different matters of the of the city and pray that thou wilt assist us in making wise decisions and we pray that thou will continue to bless our first responders and and all those who put themselves in harm's way each day. And these blessings and favors we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, thank you again, and welcome, everyone. We will start with our roll call and then get into our agenda approval. Oh, thank you. We are now calling the meeting to order. And now we will start with our roll call and agenda approval. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Cargill's here, Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
Okay, all present and accounted for. Can we get a motion to excuse the mayor? She will not be joining us this evening.
I move to excuse Mayor Kaminsky.
Okay, the motion is by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Ball. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven zero. We are now up to agenda approval.
I move the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Dunn and second by Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Ball.
I would like to move out of the consent agenda, G, H, I, and J.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is to move G, H, I, and J into general business. Do we have a second? I'll second.
Protem, does she need to amend the original motion then?
It is an amendment.
Yeah, she amended it, so we should be good. I made the mo, or excuse me, Councilmember Ball made the motion. I second it. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any votes? Okay, seven zero, so we'll move G, H, I, and J. Any other changes? All right, the motion is to approve the agenda now as amended. Do we need to amend our original motion, since it was to approve the original?
That motion amended.
Okay, okay. All okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, now we're up to citizen comments. You will have three minutes, all those here in chambers and those online with your citizen comments. Please keep them respectful. Let us know if you are a member of the Liberty Lake community and live in the city. And we will take comments both now and at the end of the meeting as well. Do we have anyone in chambers who would like to speak? Okay, anybody online? Okay, we will move on then. Again, just a reminder, you can give citizen comments at the end of the meeting as well. We don't have any announcements, proclamations, special presentations. We will move into reports and inquiries now, city council reports.
Yeah, I got a good one. A shout out to a little character and personality. This morning, I volunteered KHQ to answer phones for the Vanessa Vanessa Bean pledge tribe. And this talking head behind me, no sooner does he begin to introduce the concept and begin to introduce the phone number, I'm the first one on the phone, and the first phone ring is Tom Solberg, who is challenging all the, you know, current first first responders, current retired, to a one hundred dollar matching challenge. So I just want to say, there's a character who does amazing things in our community. So thank you, Tom.
All right, any other council comments? We'll have another opportunity for council comments at the end as well. Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes, I would. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, obviously, we've had a lot of heated discussions when it comes to library and trailhead and restaurants and things of that sort there. The one that I think is most interesting has been the restaurant selection and how we get into food preferences more important than the financial aspect of it. So sitting through the meeting two weeks ago, I I needed some time to think about what was said. So it was painful enough to sit through that meeting, but I went ahead and brought it up on my computer and watched it again. And it was equally painful to watch it the second time. And the the part that was painful is that so much emphasis, in my opinion, was put on, well, this is what the citizens want. This is what the citizens want. In reality, what the citizens want, the only way we're gonna really know that is we have to put things to the vote to give the opportunity for the citizens to vote. Other than that, we give them the opportunity to bring their opinion forward to help sway and get the necessary information. I think I found most interesting is that how divided it became on what the restaurant was going to be. And it was very, very divided, and I'm not having a challenge with that. The challenge I'm having is that some of the people after the fact said, it seemed like it was not really open on what all the figures were. The question was asked on social media and that day is that, do you want to have Sarnac or you want to have a Mexican restaurant? And in the last meeting, the mayor pointed out that I think we had fifteen, is that not correct? I think it was correct. Fifteen individuals that wanted Sarnac and two that wanted the other restaurant. What I found interesting is that nowhere did anybody talk about what the financial aspect of this is. So with that in mind, I was curious enough, I put a clipboard together and I went out two Saturdays in a row knocking on doors. And I made sure that I spoke to everybody who lives within this city that they weren't outside the city. And I asked them three things. That what restaurants would you favor? And they gave me what the restaurant was, their favorite. Then I asked them, is the food selection important to you? And some of them said yes. And so went accordingly. And then what I showed them is what the council had. And that was all the information on what the lease was going to be, and the return would be back to the city. Now, I think I ended up with like fifty-five people. The first two that signed, signed for Sarnac. The remaining fifty-some odd went with the other company. Even though their preference might not have been that particular restaurant, but what it did come down to is when they looked at the numbers, when they looked at the numbers, they changed their mind. Now, I do want to point out, and I'll turn this information into the city for all these signatures, that quite a few of the people who signed this after they saw the numbers were people who wanted the other restaurant. But when they saw that the dollar amount that the city was giving up, they were flabbergasted. And what I also did is I went to, I did not ask these people to sign, I went to several businesses in town, several restaurants, and asked them their opinion. And why didn't ask them to sign or give the opinion? Because they were very strong. And it was, why would the city take tax money and supplement their competitor? Then also what I had to look at was the mayor made a comment, and I went back because I really want, I I was hard for me to believe it was actually said that the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we would have less in revenue was, well, it's only going to be thirty-four thousand dollars we're giving up. Now, what's thirty-four thousand dollars? We're talking tonight about taking money aside to pay for Trailhead, do the library, things of the sort here, and we can't sneeze at six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So keep that in mind, is that if it was so important that these fourteen people are listened to because, and also social media, that that is what our marching order is. There's a marching order of fifty-some odd people who live here in town, who I went to their home and asked them the same questions, but there was one thing they were not asked. What was the dollar amount difference? When I saw that, I had numerous people who'd say, oh, Danny, I went to that restaurant, but I can't say no to the dollar amount. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I just wanted to say thank you to our police department and our parks department and everybody who made Winter Glow happen. The police escort of Santa was fantastic. The event was great. I loved the fireworks. I was not in a good spot to see them. But it was it was a very fun event, and thank you for everybody who took the time to come out and celebrate and also the people that worked the event for us all.
Any other comments? All right, again, we'll have another opportunity for council comments at the end of the meeting as well, or toward the end of the meeting, I should say. We're gonna skip on past the mayor's report unless you have something, Mark, that you want to say on behalf of the mayor?
I don't.
Okay, and we'll move on to the city administrator report.
Mayor Protem, if, since we have guests on our list of reporters and inquirers, I I might suggest that we move the city administrator's report to the end of this list and give others the opportunity to go first.
Okay, any opposition to that? All right, so we will come back to the city administrator report and move on to the library board of trustees.
But that's wonderful.
Good evening, council. We're happily happy to be here and give you our library board quarterly reports. Kim Gerard is here with me. We're gonna be tag teaming it tonight. Evan, first slide. I'm gonna kick it off with our firefighter storytime. You guys know I love a good story. So back in September for this fall quarter, Ms. Erin, our children's associate, put together a firefighter storytime down at Town Square Park. I brought my kids. We were all really excited for them to come. We pull into the parking lot. We can see the fire truck sitting there waiting. We get out of the car and the fire truck drives away. They had a gas leak and had to go. And so me and Erin are sitting there in the park with like fifty kids, and we're just like, what do we do? I mean, obviously, we can pull a storytime out of our out of our hat and do it. And I was like, let me take a second, let me call chief and see if there's a police officer who might be able to come read stories to the kids. So I call him up and he says, oh, yeah, I have Mike sitting right here. He'll do it for you. So he volunteered Officer Mike to come down to Town Square Park. He comes right down. We, he shows up and we're like, oh, thank you so much for coming. We're so happy that you're here. Here's your books. You can read the kids two books about firefighters, which he was absolutely thrilled about. But he did a phenomenal job. As a first responder, he knows a lot about firefighters. Our first story is all about all the different things that firefighters do, living at the fire station, different things. He adds in all of these little tidbits about firefighters and how, you know, they sleep over the fire station and just all of these things. He adds in all of these little tidbits about firefighters and how, you know, they sleep over the fire station and just all of these things. He did a phenomenal job with a book that he had never read before in his life. So he does his two stories. He then talks to the kids, let them answer questions, ask all kinds of questions about police officers. Did a wonderful job. He leaves, pulls out of the parking lot, and then the fire truck pulls back into the parking lot. So we ended up having a double storytime. We let the firefighters know we had already read the stories with them, but they pulled their truck out into the parking lot. One of the firefighters put on all of the gear and then went through and talked with the kids about all the different gear that they wear, what everything does. He had them practice crawling on the ground. And then they were able to get into the fire trucks, see all the bells and whistles, talked about their hoses. It was phenomenal. So we ended up having firefighter and police officer storytime. It was a huge hit. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. So, next slide.
Next slide. That's really the best story of the presentation because Janie gets so excited with her, with her big trucks and yeah. Okay, so our Halloween party was well attended. We have about, had about 275 participants. The theme was minions. The friends group and our teen advisory group helped put it on and there were crafts and games, coarse candy, face painting and whatnot. Oh, there was miniature golf in the stacks. And you can see there's a dinosaur, lovely dinosaur playing miniature golf in the library stacks, which, yeah. Yeah, dinosaurs at the library. Next slide, please. Friends of the library group had their fall book sale in November. They raised $2,200 for the book sale. It's the largest fall book sale earning to date. If you have old books that you, they're always looking for donations to process and put out in our, in our two book sales that we have a year. They volunteered at the Halloween party and they will be also volunteering at the Christmas craft afternoon on Saturday, the fourteenth of December. Next slide.
So I wanted to share with you guys some information about our new library app. We got this the end of October. It's phenomenal. It's going well so far. The main thing that I'm excited about with it, can we go to the next slide? Is it also gave us a brand new library catalog. This is just a screenshot from the catalog. It makes it, the thing I love about the catalog is that it's really great with helping people find something to read if they don't know what exactly that they're looking for. So each of the categories, we have, you know, adults, teens, kids. It has all of these different options. It has books that are trending within our library system. It has books that are, you know, trending nationwide with the New York Times Bestseller. It also has different categories of brand new books that we've got. So if they really like biographies or memoirs, they can click on that and it shows them all the new stuff. We can also highlight different collections. So, you know, this past month has been Native American Heritage Month, so we're able to highlight our resources on Native American Heritage Month. So it's just one of those things where particularly since it's an app and they, if they're not wanting to come into the library, it gives them options of new things for them to read. So that's something I'm really excited about. Michaela did all of the customization on this, so she did phenomenal. I will not take credit for that. But it's something that I'm just really excited about. Obviously, since it's an app, patrons will put their library card number in and then it will save that so they don't have to type that in and remember what their password is every time they log in. It gives them a digital library card and we're also able to highlight some of our databases and other resources that maybe don't get noticed as much. You know, if they're searching something on finance, it will also highlight, did you know the library has a finance resource or a finance database? Mango languages is something we're getting next year. So if they're looking up, you know, English as a second language or something, it will highlight, hey, did you know the library has a mango languages app? You can download that and it'll help you learn a new language. So it helps us push things that maybe people aren't looking for out to them. So just another thing we're really excited about. Uh, next slide. Wonder Books. We just barely got a brand new collection of Wonder Books. If you look in the corner of this book, it looks like an MP3 player. So this is a picture book and you push the orange play button and it reads the book to the kids aloud. I don't know if you remember this from school, but when I was in elementary school, the teacher would give us like a cassette player. You'd put the headphones on, she'd put out Frog and Toad and it would read it to you and then it would ding and you'd turn the page. This is all of that integrated in one. So, you know, not many people have a CD player and we do have books on CD, but this is another way that they can have a book read to them that doesn't require them to have anything. They just push the play button. So right now, Wonder Book makes picture books and chapter books and teen books. They're looking to do adult books as well, which could be really beneficial if you, you know, can't see the words on the page anymore. Sit there and it will read the book aloud to you and you can still hold the book. I think it'd be really great for seniors too, because all you have to do is push the big orange button. So pretty, pretty seamless. So that's our Wonder Books. Right now, we have a collection of picture books. Next year, we're looking to get into the chapter books and then teen and adult books as well. On the other corner of the screen is a PlayAway. This is another thing that we have invested in. It's a, it's, you know, a little MP3 player. You plug your headphones in, basically like a Walkman, but it's just a little book. So if you don't have a CD player, you can just plug your headphones in, listen to it. If you do still have like an aux cable in your car, you can plug it in and listen to a book in your car. A lot of the newer cars don't have that anymore, but that's just something else that we're looking at getting in this, you know, kind of digital world where most people just have earbuds and don't have a lot of these devices anymore. So some new things that we're trying. So let's see, senior outreach.
One of the things that our staff is really good at doing is reaching out to people who can't necessarily get to the library. So once a month, our volunteer coordinator goes to visit the guardian angel assisted living across the street. She takes a little pop-up library with her and goes to the clubhouse. Residents can stop by and get a library card, check out books, magazines, large print books, audio books and DVDs. So that makes the library accessible to people who might not be able to get there. Next slide. Another great service that we offer is homebound delivery. So if you can't leave your home without assistance, the library will come to you. Whether you, that's, you can't leave your home permanently or temporarily, if you know you're going to be laid up in your house, you can call the library and they will arrange to have some home, some items delivered to your home and come and see you. And Janie was telling me that the librarian sits and visits with that person who might be at the house for a bit. So that might, to alleviate some of the monotony of being stuck at home. So, yeah. Next slide.
Storytime outreach. So I didn't know if you guys know, but me and Ms. Erin do storytime outreach at several preschools around the community. So we go next door to the Steppingstone Christian School. We go there once a week. So we do about four, four storytimes for them. We go to the children's academy. They have a center here behind Yokes. And then they also have one at, next to Orchard Park. So we go see them two days a month. We do their morning and their afternoon classes. And then we also this year just started going to Liberty Launch Academy. So we're doing three storytimes for them for their preschool, their pre-K and their kindergarten classes. So we go there once a month and do just a little outreach fun storytime for them. Give the, the teachers a break for a few minutes, but also, you know, it's just fun to see those kids that we used to see at storytime now in their school. So total, I think we do about ten of those a month and it's just really fun. The last thing, let's see. Um, next slide, Evan. How can we help? So I wanted to talk about some of the questions that we get at the library. A lot of the time, I think people just think that people come and they're like, hey, can you help me find this book? Or, uh, you know, what's a good book to read? We help a lot with people who need help with printing. A lot of people do not have a printer in their home anymore because every time you try to use it, it doesn't work or the ink is expensive. So we get paid, we get people day in and day out coming in to print their UPS labels, print resumes, cover letters, things that, you know, their taxes, that sort of thing. We do a lot of tech assistance. We'll help people set up their new iPhone, their tablets. We do a lot of things with Kindle, setting up the Libby app on their phone. But we do get seniors who, I got a Kindle for Christmas. I don't know how to use it. I got an iPad for Christmas. I don't know how to use it. My phone, I can't, for some reason, my email isn't working anymore. Can you help me out? So we do a lot of tech assistance. It's not just the Apple Store. It's the library as well. We will in January start doing a lot of tax assistance. Obviously, we are not tax professionals, but we help a lot of people find the specific form that they need or they don't know what form that they need. And we're doing research and helping them find their tax forms. We do print our, the regular tax forms, not the booklets, just their forms for free at the library, January through May or whenever. I guess if people are still doing their taxes in October, we give them their tax forms then too. We also did a lot of voter assistance this last month. Obviously, we are a place where people go to drop off their ballots, but we have people coming in. I didn't get a ballot. Where do I go? I lost one of my mail envelopes that I need. What can I do? Can you help me? So we've done a lot of voter assistance this last month. And then we also get a lot of other random things. Last month, Michaela helped a woman who needed to apply for citizenship. She didn't speak English well. She wasn't sure where to start. Michaela had like four different sessions with her, sitting at the computer, filling out forms, calling different, calling the, I miss, it's escaped more, you're supposed to call. She had lots of phone calls, helping the woman apply for her citizenship. She spent probably ten hours with her over the course of a month doing that. We also had another gentleman who comes in every single week to check out his books. He comes in every single week at the same time without fail to check out his books every week. And he had somehow, for some reason, been dropped from his Medicaid insurance. And he needed his blood pressure medication and now what is he going to do? He came into the library. We know him very well, but he said, I don't have a cell phone. I don't have a computer. I don't know where to start. But I need to get my blood pressure medication. Can you please help me? And Michaela sat down with him. Over the course of a week, he would come in every single day and they would do the next thing that they needed to do. Obviously, he had to make a lot of phone calls. He had to fill out a lot of forms. We had to scan things and fax things, send them back and forth. And so she did a phenomenal job. She's an amazing librarian. Couldn't do it without her. I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of what we're doing aside from just checking out books. So, yeah. Thanks so much for listening. I know I can be long-winded. Questions?
What, what was that one gadget? Was it FlyAway or something like that?
So there was the Wonder Book, which is the actual book, and then there was the PlayAway, which was like the little MP3 player that you just plugged headphones.
It's like an audio book.
Yes, it's an audio book as a little MP3 player. So you don't need a CD player anymore. Yeah. It's a PlayAway.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought that was kind of interesting.
Yeah.
Council Mayor Kennedy.
Janie, thanks for your report. I must have been, I always look forward to your coming to give a report because you bring enthusiasm into the room and I appreciate that. I really, I really do. I think that's a huge impact asset that we have to the library that is infectious for all of us. Thank you for that. The part of your presentation, the last part, what could we do, really hits home with me in the sense that I go back quite often to, I think it was 2019 and we spent about $40,000 in this analysis to look at what the library needs. And so much of that was what we were looking at on the future. But the library is, was becoming more than just books. It was becoming the center for individuals to show up and communicate with other individuals, but also get involved in things beyond a book. And your presentation right there continues to cement in my mind the importance of a community center in this city. Thank you.
Yes, third spaces, third spaces, places people can go that don't cost anything and they're able to, you know, get out of their homes, meet other people and just be. After COVID, I don't think people want to be stuck in their houses all the time anymore. So, yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Janie? All right, thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. All right, now we have the culprits of the Fire Time Story Hour. The Fire Department.
Good evening, council members. We'll let you put up the, either the presentation or the numbers. That one's, that's perfect. I hope everyone had a good thing to think. I got a little time out of town, so it was nice to get some sun. I'd like to thank the library as well. Library, as my daughter always tells me, Dad, there's an R. So, but thank you. And you guys can, we know that all the police officers want to be firefighters. Everybody already knows that. But we're their biggest fans as well. So if you, if you ever need us, call us. Never mind, never mind. Look over here, everybody. Over here, focus over here.
It's a good one.
All right, so the numbers for November 2024. In its entirety, we had 1,863 911 calls for the month. Of those, eighty-three percent, which is our average for EMS calls, are what we have for EMS calls. So right on the button, right on our average. Next slide, please. Again, a map, entire map of our whole response area for the month of November only. The blue are single incidents all the way up to red, which is the biggest cluster of calls that we have, just to give you an idea of a heat map of it. Next slide. For the year, year to date, we're at 22,168 calls. Again, eighty-three percent of these calls are for emergency medical services. Next slide, please. So this is our year-to-date heat map. Again, the red are the biggest clusters for the most amount of calls and the blue are the single calls. And the colors are in between sized based on the amount of calls. Next slide, please. So the 1,863 calls were roughly required 2,291 responses. For the 22,168 total calls that we've had this year, that's equated to 27,594 responses. If you look at the frontline apparatus, the first, the first chart is November. Six of our units had over, and year-to-date, we have three units with over 3,000 calls each and seven total with 2,000 calls or more. Next slide, please. And this is our, the top chart is for last month's response percentage by, by unit and then the one below that is for the date. So at the top, it's again forty-four percent of our total call volume comes from the neighborhood, which are Station Eight, Station Seven and Station One. And then the date says this eight, three, with roughly forty-five percent of call volume. And if you know Station Ten and Station Six are not that far behind. So the top, the top five stations, if you will, make up roughly seventy percent of our total call volume. So very busy at those station houses. Next slide, please. This is our auto aid. So we responded to the city of Spokane twenty-eight times, Fire District Nine, twenty-two times, Fire District Eight, fifteen times, and District Thirteen once on mutual aid. We had District Eight respond in our area fifty-nine times. City of Spokane respond to our area thirty-four times and D nine in our area ten times. So wasn't quite as most of our months are for auto aid, but still we depend on another and so that's great to see. Next slide, please. So this is our year-over-year for the last five years. The biggest takeaway is November was busy, but it wasn't outrageously busy. But overall, we're still roughly five percent ahead of last year's call volume. And in fact, at this November, we've actually had more calls than we had in 2019, 2020 and 2021. So again, we're, we're on a path that we're going to have the busiest year we've ever had. So not, not really surprised to anyone. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So again, this is specific, this portion, just to Liberty Lake. But the month of November, we had eighty-four calls, of which sixty-eight percent for emergency medical services, which is extraordinary because generally that number is between eighty, ninety percent, but it was sixty-eight percent. Next slide. Next slide. For the year-to-date, we're at eleven hundred fifty-six total calls. Of those calls, seventy-six percent were for EMS. Next slide. So the top number again are total calls within the Liberty Lake Response Area. So the eighty-four calls required one hundred and fifteen responses and the eleven hundred fifty-six calls required fourteen, forty-one responses. Engine Three handled eighty-five percent of the total call volume within Liberty Lake for the month of November. And seventy-nine percent year-to-date, so they do handle most of the calls. And the only times they don't, obviously, are if they're out of service. Or they're on another call in another area, or had another call within Liberty Lake. And in those cases, you see the other units that take up that slack. Next slide, please. So this again is our overall year-to-year for the last five years. Right now, we've had a significant slowdown in call volume in Liberty Lake, which is what we want. And nobody wants emergencies, but they do happen and when they do, we will respond. So it is good to see that we have a six percent reduction from last year's numbers. Ironically, we're, we're still just right around twenty twenty-one's numbers for the total year-to-date. So it, it's less busier than last year, but it's still busy, so. That is your report, do you have any questions?
Questions? There's a ribbon cutting for a training center?
Yes, sir, December fifth, I believe, we are our brand new thirteen million dollar center. So we're looking at the, the total. Training Academy, the, the state-of-the-art academy itself, the whole grounds, if you will. And then a new burn center, or not burn center, but burn building. The, the original one that we bought, we bought the land in, I believe, eighty-six, built it in eighty-six. And then we updated the burn building in two, but either way, it's, it's, it's way past its life. I mean, it, it's pretty bad, I mean, I've been there enough times to, to go, wow, I. You know, you do what you have to do with what money you have and put together. The best that you can, and bottom line is, it was state-of-the-art building and it was, it's lived. This new facility is absolutely incredible and you are all welcome. Encourage you to attend and check it out, it's, it's, it's a beautiful facility. But it, it meets all of our needs, it is, it is incredible and our burn, new burn building will burn Class A fuels and it works. Great, it, it can cover everything. The biggest thing with this area is it gets very cold and snows. So we can do a lot of the stuff that we do outside, inside, it was made that way so that we could train indoors during bad weather months or bad weather days. So that's pretty cool.
Where is this new facility? Where is the new facility?
Oh, it's right on Garland and just on Barker, Barker, yeah.
Councilmember Van Orman.
A question I had was what time?
And I think we put out a press release, press. December fourteenth, yeah. So if you can't make it then, on December fourteenth, you're welcome, we're gonna have Santa Claus there. So bring the, bring the kids, bring the grandkids and get your picture made with them.
All right. A fond memory is Santa making the rounds in the neighborhood, is, is that still a thing?
It is, but that is our union, look point seventy-six, they're the ones that, that run the Santa in the neighborhood. And they still do it, they do a great job, they even came by my place, so I wasn't as bad as they thought, so.
That's not what the library tells us.
Guys, it's a tough crowd. It's a bad dad joke.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Hey, before the chief gets out of here, I want to recognize, he's accompanied tonight by Deputy Chief Brett Anderson. And if you follow our podcast, I know that you all do religiously. But we've run a series now called The Trilogy of Winter Safety and Deputy Chief Anderson was a guest on two-thirds of those episodes. Talking about things to look out for and just be mindful of as we enter the holiday season. How to be safer around the home, those kinds of things. Check it out, two episodes, both with Deputy Chief Anderson, so thanks again.
Real quick, Councilmember Kennedy had asked for information regarding prevention, smoke alarms in nature. So I give you Deputy Chief Brett Anderson, our Fire Marshal and Prevention Deputy Chief.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Council, how's everybody doing? Nice to see you, if I haven't seen you before, that I am your Fire Marshal, I do exist. It's been a very busy year of transition into that Fire Marshal position as well as hiring my replacement as a deputy fire marshal. So we've been very busy year-long and this presentation basically is the same presentation we would give quarterly to our commissioners. So it's, it's very general, it's district-wide, I don't have specific numbers for Liberty Lake. Currently report that in our system, if that's something that you would like, that's something we can look into. Do you have our presentation? So I, I like to highlight as we go, you can, this is available to you to read if you haven't seen it already. I'm gonna focus in on a couple things, slide, not necessarily go through each and every number. At the top of this graph shows the third quarter prevention numbers as far as annual inspections performed. So as your prevention division, we go out to every commercial property and inspect it annually to make sure that they're meeting the code. It's safe environment for people to shop in, for employees to work in, for people to be around in general. At the end of the third quarter, we hit four thousand five hundred and seventy-four total occupancies inspected. With a team of five inspectors. To put that into perspective, each inspector is averaging roughly twelve hundred inspections a year. That's, and that's a lot, because you have to spend some time, get to know some folks, collect, collect some information, do some public education. Do some code correction and then move on to the next one. And that number continues to increase with all the development that's going along, all, all across the valley, not, you know. Liberty Lake is growing as well, as you guys know, and it's, we welcome it, but it increases our challenge exponentially. Next slide, please. This one, the next one at the top there goes over the permit inspections by type. So you've got annual inspections and then we have permit inspections. So somebody builds a new facility out here that sells Caterpillar. We've got to make sure that the building's systems are working properly before they occupy it. So we need to go out and do inspections in most cases multiple times. For say a fire sprinkler system or a fire alarm system to make sure it's being installed correctly by people who are certified to do it. And then it operates properly upon occupancy. So it's not uncommon for us to be at a job site like that upwards of a half a dozen times over the course of its construction period. The, these stats capture that and I just wanted to point to the top three. You've got one hundred and thirty-four inspections for suppression acceptance. You've got one hundred and thirty-two for suppression cover, that means before they, they cover up any of the ceiling. We need to be able to see the piping, so we call that a cover inspection. Make sure that joints were done properly, earthquake bracings in place, and there's a lot to it. Their whole, whole section of the code that we have to go, go by. And then the third highest one is above-ground hydro, which is a hydrostatic test that has to occur before the system can go into operation. To prove that it can hold water at pressure. So the three number one inspections we do all center around sprinkler systems, of which we have in this building thankfully as well. That is good, sprinklers work, they've worked for over a hundred years and I would love to see them in every single building that we build. But short of residential, we're not quite there yet. Next slide, please. There, the top graph on this page illustrates the money that we bring in via permit fees and review fees. That number at the end of the third quarter is right around one sixty-nine, one seventy by years. And that number will more than likely come up to two hundred and thirty thousand. That helps offset the cost of running our division and specifically plans review. We have two full-time fire plans engineers that are fire protection engineers on staff with us full-time. And they help with making sure that the review process happens correctly, but more importantly, that everybody's playing by the same page and same playbook. That creates a better community, it creates more resilience. And the work that they do has just been phenomenal, so love drawing attention to them. The next slide, or not the next slide, but the next box below. Highlights the work that we do with fire alarm installations and again, this is, this is department-wide. By the end of the third quarter, we had already installed over five hundred and twelve alarms. And that's district-wide. Liberty Lake, because it is so new, in most cases, the homes here are so new, they're, they're hardwired. They're not, in, in some cases, like what we run into when we're past Barker. And we're dealing with a lot of the older homes that were built in the fifties, sixties, seventies that didn't have hardwater alarms. So we've proven that this program since two thousand and seventeen, when I started with the department, has saved over thirteen lives. Documented, which is pretty cool, pretty impressive. Next slide, please. Quarterly is an investigation arm of our division, we like to bring attention to. Fires that not only are preventable, but maybe people don't know a whole lot about. And in the third quarter, we focused on lithium ion battery fires and associated fires with those types of batteries. We're seeing more and more of it. As time goes on, there's countless number of lithium ion batteries in this room right now. And if they're not handled properly or maintained properly or damaged, they can actually cause a great deal of fire and peril in somebody's home or business. So we try to get the word out when we start seeing a common theme here, right? And in the third quarter, it was lithium battery fires. We had two. I would call them light-duty transportation devices, scooters. That were, were sold by, were sold by a local company that both were involved with fire. Well, we wanted to make sure that not only the, the federal level was aware of this, because that's how they put out recalls nationwide. But we wanted to make sure our citizen knew about it too. Spokane Valley Fire Department's partnered with Battery Safe Spokane, which is a countywide coalition, if you will, that's trying to get the word out. I encourage you to look them up, if you haven't heard of them, I'd encourage your citizens to look them up. They go over proper battery purchasing, use, maintenance and disposal. I call it cradle to grave, we really need to start talking about these batteries that way. Because if they get damaged and they're not taken care of properly, they can create big problems for anybody who owns them. Some of the signs to look for are bulging electronics, they shouldn't do that. If they're doing that, it's having an issue. If your phone is starting to separate, you need to go take it in and get rid of it properly and, and replace it. These lightweight devices that people are riding on, whether they're skateboard, scooters, bikes, it doesn't matter. If they get in the wrong environment, let's say they get submerged and they're not supposed to be, that can cause a battery thermal runaway. If they get damaged and they're recharging and that battery reacts poorly to the recharge, that can cause a fire. So paying attention to what you have and how you maintain it and the batteries that you put in it. Don't buy any old battery to replace the one that you're, you're getting rid of, get the one that's made for that device and don't buy any cheap knockoffs. It's, that's been proven as a problem as well. Next page, please. That's a picture of the scooter, you can't even tell what it is unless you know what you're looking for. We were able to track it down based on some internet searches and, and matching up some of our photos to what was online to sell it. So we got lucky on that part, but we did communicate it with our partners, not only at the federal, but also at the state and county level. Next slide, please. So this is basically a highlight of some of our main prevention programs. There are a lot of community risk reduction type of things that we do, not only as a department, but also as a division. I want to explain community risk reduction, just real quickly, that is something that, that everybody in the Fire Department does. It's not just the prevention division, it's not just a person that has the title. It's every single firefighter, it's our finance director, it's our IT director, it's, it's chief. Everybody that works there works to reduce the risk in our community. Some of the programs that we have are real pointed in specific, and I'll, I'll just highlight a couple. How many people knows, know somebody who's on oxygen? Okay, how many people do we know that's on oxygen that still smoke? It's a hard habit to give up. But the reality is, is that you're putting that oxygen-rich environment within reach of a hot enough object to create ignition. And the common theme that we've run into over the last seven years, eight years, most of our fatality fire are caused by this. Okay, well, if you, if you can predict it, you should be able to prevent it, right? We identified this as a need, we have a nasal cannula fuse program. If you know of somebody that needs a safety device, we are happy to provide it free of charge. This device goes on right before the nasal cannula gets connected to the main oxygen hose. And it also goes at the other end where the tank is at or the oxygen generator is. That if a fire does stop, it stops, or starts, it stops right there at the fuse. Just takes care of it, we have some great YouTube videos, if you want to look them up, that actually shows how it works and how quickly fire can spread. In those conditions, that's a great program.
Really like you to stop smoking.
Yeah. That would be great. Another one of our programs that I wanted to highlight is that we are working with local agencies in a shared resource, if you will. When it comes to wildland fire protection, that's something that we call the wooie in, in our industry, but it is around us. And I, by us, I mean you, in Liberty Lake, it's here, it's, it's on every border just about, right? North, southeast, maybe not so much west, but it's around us. And we're working with the DNR, we're working with local agencies and partnering with them to figure out what areas we want to project our influence on. And we do some fuels reduction and look at possibly doing surveys of different properties for the homeowners to see if they can participate in shared state programs. That involve grant money and allow for a proper get up. So we've been working on that here locally, if you'd like more information on that, feel free to reach out to me directly, be happy to walk you through that. If you know of somebody with acreage that needs to get thinned or reduced in fuel to make that person safer and the people around them, reach out to us, we have programs available. With that, I think that's the end of it, and we talked about the Holiday Open House, is there any questions for me?
Councilmember Ball.
What is the appropriate way to get rid of a lithium ion battery?
Well, most of your major disposal companies now understand that it's a bigger problem for them than it is for us. Because people that don't know what to do with them throw them in the trash. And what happens to the trash, it gets smashed and mushed and pushed. And that action starts fires at those facilities that we end up having to respond to and help them put out. So they're actually creating collection bins and they're keeping it separate from the general population, so to speak. So reaching out to Sunshine Disposal or some of these local companies, Waste Management, your local recycling centers will take them. And they get disposed of properly.
But like, you know, just like a double A or whatever, you can put that in the garbage, right?
I didn't say that, you should, if it's a lithium ion battery, you should not put it in the garbage.
I mean, just a normal battery?
I'm perfectly clear in saying, don't put it in the garbage. If you want to ask me a fourth time, my answer is gonna be exactly the same.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, Liberty Lake, so we're in Water District, is anyone here or online? Okay, all right, then we are back up to City Administrator Mark.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. If we start out with the events and reminders really quickly going down the. All right, thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, if we start out with the events and reminders really quickly going down the list here. A couple of things to point out, this Friday, December sixth, uh, the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber is hosting its annual nonprofit showcase over at uh Center Place. In Spokane Valley, starting at eleven AM, um, that I point this out because uh number one, we have two Liberty Lake nonprofits who are participating in this. And number three, or number two, it gives an opportunity just to meet all of the regional nonprofits and get a sense of what they're doing and how maybe. Uh, to, to either utilize or support, registration for this is required, it's at no cost. Uh, the, the carrot aspect of registration is you become eligible for uh Gonzaga tickets, um, and so if you're interested in either of those things. Go to uh Greater Spokane Valley Chamber's website and consider registration. Um, moving on to our Make An Impact On The State Legislature Workshop, uh, this. Was born out of the town hall that we had back a few months ago, and so on Tuesday, December tenth. We are going to host and we're up to eight registrants so far, registration will continue through uh the day of the event. And we're just going to talk about in, again, in partnership with the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber and their Government Action Committee, uh, some ways that residents in Liberty Lake can uh support the city by. Um, advocating on behalf of our legislative priorities that are actually on the agenda for later this evening. Um, and so we're, we've invited the uh. Um, we've invited the District Four legislature legislators to participate in that, we're waiting to hear back from them. Regardless, if you have an interest in learning how to make an impact with the state legislature, we encourage you to attend that. Um. Library has a lot of things going on in December, one of them's coming up on Saturday, the fourteenth, it was mentioned in the report that we heard earlier. Um, it is the family ornament party at the library at eleven AM on that Saturday. If you're interested in the other things going on at the library, get onto the website, their newsletter for December is out, it's published, and it's got a calendar of all of the events that are taking place between now. Um, and the end of the month. Um, and then this is a little bit farther down the road, but just to point out, it's coming up, it'll be here before we know it, the Christmas holiday, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. Both uh City Hall and Library will be closed in observance, and I'll point out also, the library is scheduled to be closed on Christmas Eve as well. Um, so keep that in mind. And then finally, the Winter Glow Spectacular that uh Councilmember Kurtz mentioned, the kickoff for is scheduled to uh take place through Wednesday, January first, so if you have. Uh, an inkling to go out and check that out, um, it's a great event, walk through the park, see some spectacular lights and um. I don't know if they still have the hot chocolate or anything out there, but it's, it's a fun event, so get out there and uh participate in that through January first, any questions about the advance before we move on? Seeing none, I'm going to invite uh Ben Turner up to the podium, uh, we've talked about this off and on for a while. Um, in conjunction with our um master plan, our, our capital facilities plan, um, and so we have a. Action item coming before you on the seventeenth agenda uh for the pavement preservation uh and, and master planning effort, and so I've invited Ben to give you a little bit of a preview on that, so Ben, take it away.
So I will apologize, I will not be as infectious as Jandy with the libraries. But I'll do my best, uh, Evan's bringing the slideshow up, so uh, yeah, Mark just asked me kind of give, give a kind of brief overview of what we've been working on to uh get this major part of the CFP moving forward. Uh, so I put, we've been doing a lot of research, Parametrics has been supporting us over the last few months, we've uh. We've uh got a lot of presentations from several candidates, we think we've picked, we think we've found the right one. That will both give us a good pavement survey as well as all those other things we need to um. Put that plan into place for the future and really be have, take a pragmatic approach as we move forward as a city as we grow, go to the next slide, please. All right, so I just put together a few things, uh, why, why we're here, why we're doing this, uh, first things, initial inventory. Um, a lot of the roads that we're, we're planning to repair now and in the future existed before the city was a city. Uh, so the records are not great and they're not up to date, so one of the things this survey is going to do. Is going to take a look at that and give us, basically tell us every crack in every road that the city owns. And how deep it is, all that good stuff, as well as a lot of other things that are kind of along the roadside that I'll kind of go into a little bit in the future. Uh, the, so that survey will happen, uh, they'll take, you know, thousands and thousands of light measurements via LiDAR and N-Video. And provide us with a condition assessment, which will give us a score for basically every road the city owns, we can then use that score uh to kind of plot out our next five to ten years. Of improvements that, that you see in the CFP now, and a lot of those CFP projects were put together using a lot of historical data. Uh, what the city had, uh, but a lot of that surface um visual looking at the roads and say, okay, there's a big pothole on Sprague Avenue, we need to replace that road, there's lots of bottles in Sprague Avenue, I hear about those bottles all the time. Um, that's how we've been putting together, this will give us a much more uh data-driven approach so that we can then provide a, a better budget to read, to use the, the limited resources that we have in the city, so that's really the reason we're here. And so this is kind of the, the stage set in the next couple of slides, kind of just go through the process and some of the equipment that they're, they're going to use. And some of the tools that we're going to get out of this proposal, next slide, please. All right, so this, this is a quick timeline, uh, so we're talking about this now, uh, giving you kind of a brief overview, and then the, the following meeting, we'll put it into the consent agenda for, for your vote. Um, for both the uh pavement survey uh project as well as the future uh maintenance modules and things like that that we'll go over a little bit here. Uh, so right now, the plan would be if, if the, if the project is approved in December, uh, the company would come out in the spring, once it warms up a little bit. Uh, we are partnering with Spokane Valley on this, uh, so we are getting a discount, uh, so they're, 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 they're an out of, out of state company, but they're going to come and do both, the, the plan is to do both of us at the same time, so they only come out once. It really only takes a couple of days to do the survey, because we only have about fifty, a little over fifty mile lane miles, they can really get the whole city really a day or two. And then they'll take that back and, and provide us all the information, all the algorithms and things like that, provide us a product that we can then turn into. Our, our capital facilities plan as well as, as update that scoring as we. We do little, we've got a lot of patch repairs planned as soon as it warms up again, uh, and that will help increase our score, we can keep all that updated real time. And then, right now, they, they recommend between a three and five-year cycle, based on the size of the city, we don't think three years is probably necessary, so. They would probably, if, if they do what they, what we expect them to do and give us a good product that we can use and use well, they would come back in approximately five years and recently resurvey everything. Catch all the new cracks, see all the improvements that we've made, and so we would get an updated survey every five years. And that process down there is just kind of how we do it, it's really harder here, hard to see in here, but uh, next slide, please. I'm going to go in a little bit more detail on a couple of slides, so this is, if you've seen the Google Maps car or the Google Earth car, it's very similar, except not just taking pictures, it's also doing LiDAR um collection. Uh, and the three sixty imagery, so we'll have a basically a, a Google Earth type shot of the city, but where that just kind of gives you pictures, this will also look at street signs. They'll look at trees, it will not tell us the species of tree, but it will tell us where they are. Um, it'll also look at catch basins, basically any of the, any of the stormwater um amenities that are on our roads. So we'll have a great picture of everything that we have, that we need to budget for, things like that and, and maintain. And then it'll give us that pavement index score, it, it, it takes into a lot of factors, crack depth. Uh, a lot of things that I don't need to go into tonight, but it'll give us a score, basically zero to one hundred. Um, as you can kind of see the score, anything under sixty is really a failing road that needs to be replaced. So we'll know how bad Sprague Avenue is, we'll know how bad uh Country Vista is, which are all projects on our CFP. But we'll have a better idea of when we need to tackle those. And Sprague Avenue, we, this country must, you know, and, and strategies to repair them, does it need to be a full repair? Or can it be something like Appleware, where we just kind of scraped off? A, a layer, got down to a better base layer, we did some improvements there as well, so that'll help us, it'll kind of um influence those decisions for, for future projects, next slide, please. So that's the survey, we also, what we're proposing, uh, what we found, we were really just looking for a survey, but when we started talking to these companies, they also provide management modules similar to what I presented to you a few weeks ago with facility maintenance. Having a module, we can track maintenance and, and have all that information um. For, for um future use, this will allow us to do that as well for, for streets. And so we can create work orders, we can track things as we create, as we fix things, we plug it into here, plug it into the algorithm and increase our scores. Uh, this helps for um priority-based budgeting, uh, showing outcomes, and you can see one of those, it's kind of a. It kind of looks like a street pattern, but there's like a red, green, yellow, it also tell, it'll, it'll give us a, a color-coded rating for those streets as well, so we can kind of keep track of them. Um, as we need to. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the work order management system where we'll, we'll be able to access from our. Uh, cell phones, well, tablets that we have, allows us to tackle those things, allows us to schedule, uh, to be more efficient with our, our limited resources. I really think this is going to keep us from having to grow our workforce um for a little while, which is, is. Uh, as we grow, and just like you started, you hire a person, you have to outfit them, do all those things. Uh, so I think this is really going to help us be more efficient for, for, for quite a while before we'd have to really grow our streets workforce, because we can schedule their time well. Slide please. All right, so here, here's the brass tacks, this is the, this is the proposal. Uh, it came out, this is, this is for a three-year subscription after, for all the software as well as in all the, the initial uh. Street scan pavement, that's a, that's a reduced cost because we are sharing, sharing utilization costs with Spokane Valley. It gives us GS, GIS mapping layers, it's, it'll look, it'll tell us where every single traffic sign is. On the street, they'll have a picture of it, so we know if it's faded, like those no parking signs on Country Vista by the, by the elementary school that need to get replaced. We'll know that without having to drive around, having to put uh, a, a person in a vehicle and drive around. In the past, we've been, we actually had one of our employees run around and doing this with a Google, with Google Maps. That's what we're, that's what we're using right now, and Google Maps is obviously is free, but also it's limited, we can only put a, a couple of hundred signs there before we run out of the. How the ability to use that free software, so this allows us to do. Everything in the city and we can update it, if we replace a sign, we can update that, put it in the database and keep track of all that. And with signs, we can, we're, we've already got kind of a plan to refresh those on a, on a periodic basis as they wear out. Uh, and fade away due to weather. Uh, also gives us catch basins, trees, I could mention before, and so those bottom, those top five line items, those are all one-time costs. Uh, we would have to repay that five years when we come back and re-survey, uh, the red, the bottom three lines, although that's kind of the annual cost, the first year does have some uh software setup fees. Uh, we order about ten thousand dollars. Um, and I think when, when we look at it, uh, we can, we've got the CFP line on for the pavement condition study as well as uh money in the Stormwater Fund, and I believe I did talk about this a little bit when we did budget review. Under professional services for roadways, so that's kind of our proposal on how we pay for this. I think I've only got maybe one more slide. All right, so next steps, uh, so I've given you the kind of the initial uh presentation, uh, we'll put together this together and a consent agenda item for uh, for your vote in the next session. Uh, the plan is to get this, uh, if, if you agree and approve this proposal as is or as adjusted to the fit. Uh, we would sign the contract with Street Stand in January, they'd be coming out in spring. Uh, we'll get that scheduled uh with Spokane Valley, so we're, we're going to have some time. Any questions?
Ben, can you just uh reiterate how you'd pay for it again?
I'm going to go back to the next slide of them. So we've got, we've got the CFP line item for the, for the pavement condition study. Uh, we're proposing that pace for all the, basically all the survey work as well as the implementation cost for the first year of the uh, the software. And then we break it up between the Stormwater Fund and the roadway professional services and the procedure.
Any other questions?
And so I'm looking at Councilmember Kurtz because she's asked this question uh consistently, what? What is the number, right? What do we need to be budgeting uh to tackle street maintenance going forward? This finally is the tool that will give us that precise answer, not only in year one, but in all of the out years, and so we're excited about this. We look forward to getting this on the agenda and get started with all of the work that Ben has just described. Any other questions on that?
I'll, I'll just say thank you, Ben, uh, this is what we've been looking for, so we're really, really excited to see this implemented.
Pleasure. Thanks, Ben. All right, I'm going to invite Chief Simmons up to the podium, and he's going to give you some information about an exciting new development uh with the police department. Called the Liberty Lake Police Foundation, Chief, take it away.
Okay, actually, I'm not going to steal John's thunder, so I'd like to introduce the man, myth, the legend. Our police ambassador, John Vajosa, who. Did a lot of hard work to, to form this foundation, so thank you and take it away.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Well, I don't have really a, a presentation, the only thing that, that I was able to um submit is the flyer, um, but hopefully you've had a chance to look at. Um, the foundation is uh five oh one C three. And um it is really not official yet, it's, it'll be official on January first. Um, I delayed the start of the foundation simply because um we would have to file our reports, state reports and taxes and so forth, and. We're not going to have enough activity right now to, to really warrant that, so. Um, so the work, and it gave me a little bit of time to uh put bylaws together and run it by the board. Uh, we have five board members that I'll bring up here in a second. And um, you know, just to kind of look at what it is that we want to accomplish, um, so there's, there's still a lot of work ahead of us. But uh, I'm really excited about the project because it's going to be a cooperative uh venture with the police department. A lot of the, the work that we do is going to benefit the, the police department, but more importantly, it's going to benefit the, the community. Because there's a lot of things that we're going to be able to do um that are outside of the budget, so these are. Things that will go after grants, uh, donations and, and so forth. To uh benefit the uh police department, and they'll cover things like, there'll be some services and, and possibly training and, and so forth. We still have a lot of, of work to do there to, you know, really figure that, that whole uh, that whole piece out. So um, we do have the, the bylaws in, in place, and like I said, it isn't official yet, but it's enough for us to get started and, and start our discussion, you know, within the group. Um, so five, five board members, and you'll probably recognize the majority of them. Um, if I can have them come up and introduce themselves quick.
I am Rick Johnson and uh I own Spokane Sunscreen, and I'll be helping with marketing.
And I'm Scott Hope, I'm a retired police chief from Post Falls, I spent thirty-two years over there, and I'm really proud to be working with John, I've worked with John for a number of years. Whatever he touches turns to gold, so I'm glad to be part of this uh, this project.
I'm Joe Mann, in case you didn't know me, uh, this is another really important aspect of what we do in this city. Uh, I want to find any way I can to help with the two primary functions that government is supposed to provide to our citizens, and that's security and safety. And this is what this organization is all about, and we are fortunate to have this police department, and we're going to do everything we can to help it get even better.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council, uh, Brian Asmus, retired police chief from right here in Liberty Lake. Uh, current Spokane Valley Fire Commissioner, and I will be serving as the board secretary. And again, uh, John's done a great job uh putting this together and just excited to be able to support our police department in new and exciting ways. As well as um benefiting our community and providing services to them as well.
I recognize myself, Deputy. Liberty Lake Police Department, I'll be serving as liaison for the police department. Thank you very much.
Joe, I think you need to sign up for another commission. At, at least one or two more before the end of the year.
So I'm, I'm very blessed to um have been able to ask these individuals to serve on the board. Um, I know that they're very community-minded, uh, they're safety-minded, and um I think we have a lot of uh, of good things ahead of us. Um, we have a website, it's not really, it's semi-functional, I guess. Um, go ahead and, and visit it, we have a little bio on, on each of the board members. And uh, come January first, I'll release it with all of the, you know, information as far as donations and grants and, and that sort of thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. All right, um, if you all will recall, and as we heard um a little bit earlier, uh, you'll remember on November the nineteenth, um, council directed the staff to enter. Lease negotiations with both of the restaurant proposers, and um I'm going to invite Kyle up to the podium to give you a quick update on that process.
Yeah, so very brief, um, so obviously we had subsequent conversations with Bird Realty, those are owners' representation uh for the city. Uh, so they have been in contact with both Serenac and Chavalitas uh on some requests that the city has had of them. Uh, to essentially provide documentations to get us to a point where we can effectively negotiate these leases, and that deadline is tomorrow. And so that hopefully gives us enough time uh to pass this back and forth as, as much time as needed to get this in front of council by the seventeenth, that is our goal. Um, but that is contingent upon us getting those documents that we have requested from each entity, and so really brief uh update, uh, essentially stating where we're at in the process. And so really brief update, essentially stating where we're at in the process, where we hope to be on the 17th. And then obviously you will see when that packet comes out, if, if we're in a position. If not, it wouldn't be anytime after the 7th of January. So.
Quick question, Kyle.
Yeah.
Since you're saying the deadline is tomorrow, I'm assuming that means that we have not received.
Oh, we're both partial. I'll say that. So we, we are anticipating getting everything we need by the end of the day tomorrow, so we can bring this back to you on the 17th.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Alright. Thanks, Kyle. Last item on my report, I wanted to bring forward some information for you to answer questions that were posed on the discussion that occurred at, at the meeting on November the 19th. And so we've got a handful of items. And I'm going to invite Lisa up initially to go over some information that we were able to collect in response to the question about what, what about the current library facility and a possible footprint expansion? And I'll say before that slide gets posted, so you can see it and Lisa takes over the conversation here. These are, these updates are not to they're, they're not to put the council in a position to make any decisions tonight. These are, this is information that you ask questions about. We have assembled and collected the information and are now bringing it back to provide you extra detail that we can use at some future point to, to make decisions down the road. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa for the first part of this.
Thank you, Mark. Councilmembers. Councilmember Kennedy had at the last meeting suggested the possibility of possibly expanding the footprint of the existing library. And so we got some information, we got a title report to find out where the easements were, et cetera. Look at the code and to be able to give you on a super high level just an analysis of how feasible that might be. Evan, do you have the slide? There it comes. Yeah, so we took a moment to, first of all, identify the easements on the property. There is a 20-foot easement, it's a stormwater and sidewalk easement on the west side of the property. There's also an easement for access to the cell towers on the PD side. There is a, a five-foot setback required. And there is, we've identified the area where there's an, the existing swale and drywell system as well as the location of the generator. Wanted to point out that in the northwestern corner, there is a pretty significant grade difference. And it actually appears that, that the property to the north may have an easement. And I couldn't really mark it on there because it was a very wonky legal description, but it does appear that there is some drainage in that northeast corner that where there, there's a bit of a depression. And it does appear that there may be an easement in place. But as I said, I could not decipher the wonky legal description on it. So I'm not 100%. It was seeing several different finding site plans and I tried to piece it together and wasn't sure that I got it. Anyhow, long story short, what the, as we looked at it, what that really left us with was an area that is approximately 2,300 square feet that could potentially be in addition to the library. Now I got to point out a couple of other things. The library is already underparked. And so if you add an expansion, we'd have to basically increase the parking lot by 35%. I don't think there's the room to do that. And that would also require that we then expand the swale potentially. Can't say that for certain without doing the calculations because it could be an oversized swale, but it doesn't appear to be. So, so that's kind of, that's kind of the analysis. So a lot of, a lot of it would be very challenging potentially to add less than 2,500 square feet to the library in this location. And one of the things that, and I'm going to let the subject matter experts speak to this. One of the things that in looking at this, we realized is that that also creates a significant potential life safety issue as well as operational issue for PD as it relates to having only one means of ingress and egress. And with that, I'd like to maybe ask DC Morgan to come up and share with you from PD's perspective.
Thank you, Lisa. So she presented me with the map a little bit earlier today and asked me what problems it could entail. The biggest thing for that is that right next to the generator, we have another gate. That's for us to operate on. And the main easement that you see over on, I guess would be the northeast corner there where we have our gate, is actually a powered gate. And in, in the event we lose power or in the event that that gate goes out, we have to have another egress in order to get out of our parking lot. Otherwise, we are basically, police officers are locked up inside of the vehicle and we can't do anything with it. So we have to have that second egress in order to get out. And, and that's how we utilize that gate. And we actually have a manual gate that we can open up on that side and get in and out of that northwest corner. And that's a huge thing for us, especially when it comes to officer safety concerns for a myriad of reasons. For example, somebody comes to the front, blocks the front entrance, we have to have a way to get out and, and address that threat. If we can't get out that front, then we're not going to be able to address that front, that exit there. So we have to have an egress in order to get out that backside. And if you block that, we're also going to lose a lot of our capabilities with vehicles that we can have coming in and out of there, especially when it comes to evidence. Some of our vehicles are larger and they have trailers that they bring in with our, our tow comp, tow companies. So they have to pull straight through that one gate on the northwest side and go straight through after dropping it through, because the, the vehicles sometimes are just too large. So it would be a huge hindrance for the police department if that would be added to that specific location. Thank you.
So also, if you take away that, that, that gate from us, larger deliveries, we could not get any. You can't get the larger trucks through that east gate. And also there's no way we, we would be able to get our MRAP through the east gate at all. So we would have to store it outside the secured area because we couldn't get it through the east gates too large.
Can I ask a, a quick question? And maybe this is for Lisa. Lisa, I assume the 2,300 is just a one level building, correct? Obviously, if we went up, we could do more than that.
If we went up, we would also need an elevator.
Right, right. But we could.
But we could.
Okay.
We could. That is correct.
And then the second question I have is that, let's just say for the sake of argument, we went ahead with that blue box area that you have. Could the part where the existing swell and dry well above that be used as basically a wraparound if we were to reconfigure that parking lot and area? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
It, it could potentially, you'd have to look at the engineering on it. You can engineer any problem away. But because of topographic challenges and whatnot, there'd be a heck of a lot of earthwork that would have to happen. But yes, it could potentially be redesigned. Again, I was just on a very cursory level saying, is this a quick and easy fix? And it doesn't appear that it's a quick and easy fix.
Okay.
And, and so that, and not easy means more money.
Yeah. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. This is great information. I really liked the overall view to be able to look at this and get a better idea. I think as we move forward, another question could be that could it be a freestanding building situated somewhere in the northwest part of that? And once again, not for big discussion tonight, but a freestanding one. By doing so, it does not eliminate the gate. The police needs to get in and out of there because that, that would be a concern. I know when, when the generator was going to be put in there, that did come up an issue at the time. The generator would, would that impede that, but apparently it was not. So this is great information, but it certainly gives us something to look at.
And, and again, that would be, your, your comment would be a possibility to do freestanding. I think the bigger challenge is that we're already underparked there and to, to come up with another 13 parking spaces and the additional swale area to treat that stormwater. It, it doesn't appear that the area is available to do that on the site. That's probably the biggest. And if we went, if we went up two stories, we would have even more, require even more parking. So there, the, the parking is probably the, the more challenging piece of it. The rest of it probably could be engineered away.
I do agree with you with the parking. It certainly has to be a strong consideration. You know, it does do us any good to build a lot, big facility, knowing we can get to it.
And technically, technically, you are subject to your own zoning code, so.
What? Suddenly your attitude, I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Lisa, one more quick question.
2009.
Oh, I'm sorry.
2019, when, when the analysis was looking at this. One of the discussions that came up was the better utilization of the police department parking lot. And some of the ideas it was, was how can we get more parking, more utilization from the police department parking lot? And what it was, was specifically looked at is to have a path on the south side of the building through partially that grassy swale that was there. So then the overflow actually goes to the police department, which is rarely used when it comes to parking in there. So that was, was something that was, I do remember came up.
Again, that, the, all possibilities. It was just a kind of a cursory look at what, what's on site and what the easements look like.
Great info. Thank you.
Lisa, one quick follow up. See the, the, basically the shadow location on the west side of the library? Is there anything that would prevent us from expanding that way as well? If we were to take the entire building and just fill in where the shadow is?
So there is the, and, and again, these, these are all choices and decisions. There's, there's the garden, the, the reading garden in the, in, in the one corner. But it, that is possible. Again, every time you, you increase the square footage though, we, we're still looking at the parking challenge. And again, operationally speaking, and I can't speak to, you can see from this picture, we've got our fleet of, of PD vehicles. And this aerial is several years old. So I think, I suspect that it's a little light in terms of the, the count. Again, that's also the impoundment area, which makes it challenging for any sort of a walking path, et cetera, to the, the other part of the parking lot. I can't speak to employee parking. And that's, that's really would have to be cheaper DC, but.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Van Orme?
Yeah, I remember they were talking about the lines going through for Tier Point. Were you able to check that out?
So I, we got a title report and there is no easement on the, the north side of the property. And, and I was questioning whether it was under the parking lot since the swale is there and there's actually a dry well in there. So I, so I doubted very much that there was anything there. But again, I suspect that there is the easement. And I think the easement goes to the, to the, the tell, the, the microwave tow, tower, the cell tower. And that's an access easement. However, I suspect that the, the, the easements that were being talked about that go behind Tier Point probably go directly to the cell tower.
So at the end of the day, what this is intended to communicate is, like Lisa described, there are some possibilities. Any further development of a project that would include a footprint expansion? And, and again, we're not going, we're not putting a decision in front of you tonight, is, is going to take additional time, effort and and dollars in order to get the real answers. And so if council chooses to do that at some future time, obviously we can develop that project. But we just wanted to give you a, kind of a quick and dirty answer to your question tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Second item on, on this particular point that we wanted to clarify. If you'll recall back to the conversation that centered on the 2008 ballot measure and its project. The, just for clarification sake, I wanted to point out to the council, so as you're considering how to proceed when we, we start having formal conversations again regarding scope and direction. That entire project was a combined community center, civic center, library complex that was in total 47,000 square feet. And the price tag at that point, at least the proposed bond measure at that point was 9.7 million dollars. As we looked through and tried to confirm whether the square foot, the cost per square foot based on the type of use that was included in the proposal and preliminary cost estimate at that time were reasonable and valid. And then plusing those dollars up to 2025 construction costs. That facility exactly square foot for square foot today would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 19 to 24 million dollars. And so just use that information. Now, that doesn't say that you can't scale back the square footage or anything like that. But just like for like, square foot for square foot. We're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 19 to 24 million dollars, depending on how you interpret some of the second floor space. And so moving on, any, any questions about that?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a little clarity.
Okay.
Realize that that 47,000 square foot was not finished. A lot of it was just, the basement was unfinished, the upstairs was unfinished. And some of the other workrooms were unfinished.
Right.
That was to be finished at a later date.
Right. And that's all factored.
Perspective.
That's all factored into those cost escalators. Yes. And, and in the original plan, it's clearly marked as, some of that space is clearly marked as unfinished, but.
So based on, based on my methods, you're assuming about a 400, 450 dollar per square foot cost? Roughly?
On average.
Yeah.
But some of the space on the main level gets up to the 600, 625 dollar range.
Right. Okay.
Alright, um, next item was related to the 2022 building assessment that is related to 23129 East Mission, which is currently the Legacy Church Building. And I, I just wanted to, to clarify that. If you'll recall the, and, and I realize this has been now over two years ago. But we provided an update of this back on September the 17th when Turner and Townsend Herry presented some information associated with the public engagement piece of the library design and construction project. And just, just to remind council, that, that number that was provided in that report, which was a total of 1.57 million dollars. That included specific things. And, and at the time, the general scope that was given to OAC, who is the company that provided the report and did the assessment, was essentially that, that, that was going to be a warehouse style building. They were going to go in and take down walls. It was going to be a huge open space with four offices. That was the scope that was provided to them. And against that scope, they provided an estimate of what it would take to, to get the building from the use that it was to that use. And so those costs that came through there, through that assessment included what I just described. It included an IT room, new carpet, ceiling tile, interior paint, a small kiosk desk, code and mechanical and electrical upgrades. What it did not include, and, and this is something that Jonathan Miller from Turner and Townsend Herry highlighted during that presentation on September the 17th. It did not include sales tax, any design cost, furniture contingency, any, any change to the restrooms, which if you're adding occupancy would have to be addressed. No, no new data cabling, no new power outlets, no audio visual, none of that. But that was all excluded. And so transitioning into the final point, and these go together. I, I want to make sure that going forward, we've, we've talked and we've used kind of the general term, bringing it up to code. The, the code issues there were, were associated with the change of use. And they're primarily gathered in those three main categories that I just described, architectural, mechanical and electrical upgrades. I, I want to clarify for the council, and I know you know this, but I just, I want to clarify. The building as it currently exists as legacy church, going back to our purchase of it and, and today, is not out of code compliance. It, so there is no issue with the code compliance of the current facility. The issue comes when you propose to change its use. And so that's what was assessed. The issue comes when you propose to change its use. And so that's what was assessed in twenty twenty two. And based on that very wide open concept, very vanilla, uh, scope. Uh, that was the estimated cost just to include those things that I read off. Um, the difference in, in price and, and the change that occurred between August of twenty twenty two, when this report was delivered. And September seventeenth, when the proposed budget for the new library design and construction project was delivered at roughly five point eight million dollars. Was all of the programming that was excluded from that assessment. And so from a cost perspective, I just wanted to bring council up to speed and clarify that, that code, um, issue. Just to make sure that the public primarily understands that the building currently is not out of code compliance. Um, and that isn't ever what we've been discussing. And so with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions or, or try to.
So quick, quick follow up to that one. So the, the issue that, um, I think was coming up in, in the last meeting was. And, and something that Jonathan had previous, previously said as well, is that the, um. I, I believe he said, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, about two point eight million of that was these bringing it up to code. Numbers. So, uh, uh, in other words, in twenty twenty two, it was one point seven two. And then once we got to the final proposal last year, or earlier this year, it was up to two point eight. And so, are we comparing apples to apples there? So it did increase, it's just.
It, I would say it was clarified with the scope clarification, as, as the scope was clearly defined over basically a warehouse. With a couple of offices to the conceptual designs that you saw that were presented.
That's, but that's not what Jonathan said when we asked that question, because I specifically asked him about whether the two point eight or the three million. Included things like the new reception desk and the, you know, those type of, the furniture and those, those type of things. And he said, no, the two point eight was just the code stuff.
Well, I would say that that's accurate, but it's the code stuff that is related to the, to the clarified scope. And, and so Lisa looks like wants to make a comment.
Yeah, I, so I want to make a, I want to make a point and it's a significant point. The building code changed between the time they did the analysis and now, and with the change of use, we have to bring it up to. We have to meet the new energy code, and that is part of that, that cost increases, a significant part, part of the cost increase.
Right. So, so the combination of the clarification of the scope and, and the, we're still talking about the code, the code changed. And so there's new requirements. Yeah. So the combination of those two things are the delta.
Yeah. Any additional questions, comments? Okay, or anything else, Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Proten. That concludes my report.
Okay, so we are up to item nine, back to our workshop discussions. When we left the six o'clock meeting, we were, um, in the police department budget. And there was an amendment on the floor to increase the police department, uh, budget by. See if my math, I was correct, you're three hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty four thousand, three hundred ninety eight dollars to an even six million. And that was seconded by Councilmember Kennedy after being proposed by Councilmember Spencer. So we can continue that discussion. I think Councilmember Kurtz was in the middle of her.
I hadn't asked my question yet, um, but it was for the chief.
And this is page fifty nine, fifty nine.
So if we look at making this amendment, three hundred and fifty four, is that your number?
Fifty nine.
Three fifty nine, three fifty nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, three fifty four, on page fifty nine, sorry.
There we go. Okay, um, one of the things that you talked about before is you were trying to balance being fiscally conservative with things. Um, and when we talked, when we had you present originally with, when we originally talked about this, one of the things that I said before was that I was concerned about pay scales. And making sure that we're, you know, doing a good job there. Um, and I think what I was expecting from that was from there. Um, wanting to make sure that you felt like you were fully funded to meet the needs of the city, um, not feeling pinched in any sort of way. Um, and I thought there might be some sort of ask that you would have throughout this process, um, so that we could add something to this budget. Okay. All right, let's do that.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to tell a story. So after, after that, uh, that city council meeting, I went back the, the following day. And I reached out to about fifteen to twenty chiefs, uh, in similar sized cities. I, I tend to do this every year, um, as I'm planning my budget. Um, I just did it a little later this year. And so I asked several questions. Uh, a majority of those questions revolved around what percentage of their budget comprised the, uh, their general fund for their city. Their staffing levels, whether they felt they were accurately staffed, uh, uh, numerous questions I asked, and I received a response for about eighty percent of those. Um, and, um, there's a couple of things that that does. Number one, it. That communication, uh, helps me, um, make sure that we're moving in the right direction, especially from experienced chiefs around the state. Um, I'm able to ask questions, um, you know, make sure that, you know, from budgetary standpoint and a staffing standpoint, that we're moving in the, in a positive direction. And, um, so, um. One of those, what that allowed me to do is go back and reevaluate our budget. And so I actually, I, I don't know if, uh, each one of you remembered the budget proposal that I sent out prior to, um, that date, the, the, the first date. I don't know if you, I, I sent it out to everyone in an email. This was an addition to that, and I didn't get a chance to send it out. But, um, it did give me a chance to go back and reevaluate some things. Um, and. Right now, at, at this point, we're having to make some changes to balance. What I would, would consider some minor staffing shortages. Um, the main thing we're going to do is we're, we're getting rid of our power shift. Um, our power shift is a great asset to us, but it does, uh, eliminate, it does eliminate some issues that we're having over time requests. Um, to be completely honest, a lot of our officers are getting burnt out because of the overtime. So we're having, uh, less and less officers respond to those overtime needs. So we're having to, to do some creative things to, to make sure that we're okay as far as staffing. A perfect example of, of, of that is a couple of nights ago, we didn't have a supervisor on because of illnesses and some other things. And, um, it was a night that we needed a supervisor on, I'm not going to get into that. Um, so we're having to do some creative things to, to help out with. Eliminating some of the overtime, um, in staffing shortages, um, and eliminating that power shift. Would allow us to address our issues and investigations to, which I'll talk to you about. Um, that power shift again is pretty. It's pretty beneficial to us in the city, but at this point, it, it's best that we, because of the staffing issues, that we eliminate that power shift. And so, um, so, you know, creative ways to address not having one or two additional officers. Um, so I went back, did some research, uh, did some, um, some numbers crunching. And that additional money would be more than sufficient to get us, uh, one additional F T E, uh, like a police officer. Two police vehicles, um, equip those vehicles, two additional mobile data computers, um, an additional taser, the camera. All the equipment that the officer needs there, um, additional patrol rifle, the uniforms to equip that officer. And also, I mentioned before, a, a crime analyst, um, which I think is extremely important for us moving forward. Um, in, in numerous ways, numerous, numerous ways, everything from allowing us to track data. And, and to take an evidence-based approach in everything that we do now, using the data, um, you know, that we can compile with, in our agency from our activities. But also helping out with things like investigations and search warrants, and they, they just do so many things that I think would benefit our, our agents, especially our investigative session right now. And so went back, uh, again, and did those numbers, um, worked in conjunction with Mark and Kyle, who actually went. Uh, and, uh, obtained, um, data from, um, all of the cities in Washington under fifty thousand, uh, fifty, fifty thousand to five thousand.
Between five and fifty.
Yeah, yeah, between five and fifty thousand, uh, of the same information that I, most of, some of the information that I, I asked, um, those chiefs that I emailed to. Uh, just so that I can look again to make sure that we're moving in the, in the right direction and we're not an oddity. Um, and so, um, could we use the staffing? Yes. To be completely honest, yes, we could, we could use an additional officer.
What's your number that you had?
The number's here. So in order to, the salary and benefits, that's medical, et cetera. For one additional officer is about a hundred sixty two thousand and fifty five dollars. Um, to get two, uh, additional vehicles, and we have six vehicles over a hundred thousand miles. That was in that report that I sent you. Um, another thing that really surprised me, and I, I failed to mention this, is in twenty twenty two, we had, uh, at the end of the year, we had seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty six calls for service. And twenty twenty three, we had, it was down slightly, we had six thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven calls for service. I, we, we feel the fire department's pain because this year we're going to reach ten thousand calls for service. Um, as of tonight, we were at nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight calls for service. We've never been near that. Um, and so that, that's kind of been, it's, it's been super, super busy. Um, oh, finished telling you the numbers. Um, so two vehicles is around, um, around ninety thousand, um. Equipment those vehicles are around sixty thousand, uh, the mobile data computers, to get two of those is around seventy five hundred. Uh, two additional, uh, tasers and cameras is about seventy five hundred, two additional, or two additional patrol rifles is around three thousand. That's fully, that's the rifles, the optics, um, and the, what we call the cam that goes on the front, the basically a silencer, is what most people know, know it as. Um, it, it'll cost about six thousand dollars to equip those two officers. And, um, in my research for crime analysts, uh, the average, uh, salary for a crime analyst in the state of Washington is seventy five thousand dollars.
With benefits?
That's just some, that's just salary, so not benefits. And I, did you get a chance to look it up, pal? The benefits, the crime analysts? About there, okay. And so again, went back, did a ton of research, um, to see if we, what we could add responsibly. Um, and I don't know where Jed, I, I, I kind of, in my head, I was like, was he in my office behind me? Is it a cloaking device or something? Looking at the numbers because it kind of surprised me when he said that number. Uh, DC and I kind of looked at each other and he had to go out to the car to get the, the sheet, um, so.
Chief, can I ask you two things?
Yes.
Well, first I just want to say, and, and remind, we don't need reminding, but I think it's important to point out. The community poll that we had earlier, by far and away, named, named, um, public safety as their number one priority. So, um, to me, that, uh, that says a lot. And I, I believe that the two biggest issues in the city are obviously safety, and as I mentioned earlier, getting rid of our debt as soon as we possibly can. Uh, my question to you, chief, is that I think, I think the community would wholeheartedly support. Increasing police funding if it meant more manpower for you. What, what I don't want to see happen is we increase police funding and, you know, I, I know conferences are important and all those other things are important. But, you know, I think, um, I think the community would say that's less of a priority. So I guess my question to you is, can you guarantee if we were to increase to three fifty four, that we'd be at least be able to increase by one F T E?
Of course, yes. Yeah. And, and going back to the training, like I said before, and it was evident in our performance evaluations this year. Is that we're taking, again, more evidence-based approach to everything that we're doing now, and, and we're trying to get better at that. And so when we're filling out those performance evaluations, focusing on, on the goals, um, in the direction that each officer wants to go in, in the agency. So their training moving forward would both, uh, have, any training that they go to will have to be, uh, their focus. Will have to be their focus as far as their future aspirations here within the department.
Councilmember Spencer.
Chief, uh, got a question, and thank you for this, uh, additional information. Um, so you, you talked about that power, is it the power shift?
Yes.
Okay, so adding an additional F T E, is that going to allow you to continue the power shift?
We'd have to go back and reevaluate it, but I think it, it may give us the ability to do that. And another thing that would give us the ability to do is we were one officer, one officer short, uh, from being able to look at, uh. Different schedules that would increase our staffing to, to move away from the twelve hour shifts. But we just don't have the staffing to move away from the twelve hour shift. So we were looking at ten thirties, um, ten hour shifts, ten thirties, ten forty fives. Um, a, a variety of different shifts that would allow us to have not only more, uh, staffing on the street. But that also means an increase in the supervision as well with, with our current staffing. But in order to do that, we need, we needed that, that one body. And so this additional body will give us the ability to look at some alternative schedules that, number one, would increase, uh, the staffing on the streets. The numbers on the streets, but also from a health and wellness standpoint, would be much better than from the, uh, for the officers than the ten, the twelve hour shifts. Because twelve hour shifts are detrimental to your health. If you've never seen the research, it is, they're, they're horrible, it's horrible.
Okay, additional comments, yes, Councilmember.
He said that if, you know, had, you had, you had these additional funds, we could have a motorcycle, um, patrol.
You all love your motorcycles. It's something we can explore, it's something we can explore. Like I said, uh, we're, we're looking at eventually having the staffing to form an, an actual traffic unit. And that motorcycle, those motorcycle officers would live within that, that traffic unit.
Right, because I mentioned this a long time ago, that with a motorcycle, like some of those little side streets, they can hide better, you know? Kyle Fritz told me that, then they could zoom out.
I have a full-sized car and I hide perfectly fine. Pretty good.
Any other comments, question, uh, Councilmember Kurtz?
It's not a question, but thank you for giving like the data that we can look at. I think that one of the exciting things about this is to give potentially some relief to officers and have what we need. Um, and then the ability to have the crime analyst that can then help you give us more data-informed information. So thank you for giving us what you actually need, because I don't want you to feel like you're on a shoestring budget. Um, we want to, public safety is the number one thing that the communities ask for, like Mayor Bertin has said.
Okay, any other thoughts?
If, if I can interject so that, so that this is on the record, um, as we talked about. The analyst has to be part of any increase in budget. That is the key factor in all of this, so, okay. The crime analyst has to be part of this, whatever is going to be purchased with this increase in budget.
Okay, all right. So the motion, uh, is to increase the police department budget by three thousand, or three hundred and fifty four thousand. Three hundred ninety eight dollars to a total of six million even. Um, and that was put forward by Councilmember Spencer, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so vote passes six to one. All right, thank you, Councilmember Spencer. Anything else on the police department budget?
So I'm noticing the time, I'm noticing the rest of the agenda and wondering how much more we want to commit to the budget tonight. Or if we're looking at maybe extending the meeting, just so that everybody's sort of prepared for where we're headed.
Good question. So general business shouldn't take very long. We have a reappointment and then a resolution. Um, it would seem to me that those three shouldn't take more than twenty minutes. That, you think that's there? So maybe we go till nine thirty?
On the budget.
On the budget? That work for everyone? Five thirty-ish? Okay, all right, anything on the police depart, anything more on the police department? All right, hearing none, we will move on to planning, engineering and building services, which is page sixty five. I did have one question, um. Uh, we were, uh, talking in our last meeting, uh, on the budget about fund number five, five, eight, five, zero, ten, oh, one. Which is the overtime, uh, piece, and I believe either Ben or Lisa, and, uh, forgive me. Because I can't remember who said it, uh, said that we would not hit that seventy five hundred dollar number. Is that still accurate?
Yeah, that's still accurate. I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure. I guess we've done that in the past because when we've had people that are out or we have, um, uh, emergencies and whatnot. We've had, one of our people earned so much, uh, uh, vacation time that they don't use the overtime. So that's where we've seen it go in past years. We did not have that this year. Um, that person's retiring, most of our, most of our staff, um, when they work overtime, they convert to comp time.
Yeah.
And which is our preference when it works that way. But so, no, there's no way we're going to get even close to hitting that.
Okay, so with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to reduce that fund. I did a quick, um, math of the past five years there, and it looked like the average was about forty five hundred. I did a quick math of the past five years there and it looked like the average was about forty-five hundred. So my motion is to reduce that fund to forty-five hundred. Sorry. Any questions, comments?
This is five five eight, five oh, one oh, oh one, right?
Correct, yep. Which would take it from seventy-five hundred to forty-five hundred. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. I think it was unanimous, right? Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on planning and engineering? All right, let's move on to library. Anybody have any proposed amendments here? This is the municipal library general fund, page sixty-nine. Going once, twice. Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, two, two items I'm concerned about is one that we had in the budget, the nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar worship grant, the other one's a five hundred thousand dollar donation line item.
So we're just talking right now about the general fund budget, not the construction budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Page sixty-nine. So this is just the general fund budget for operations for seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, zero three five. Okay, anything? All right, we'll move on to parks maintenance. Which is page seventy-two. Any amendments? Okay, hearing none. We're done with the general funds. So let's move to all other funds. Public Works Street Operations, which is page seventy-nine. I did have three questions here. First, Kyle, do we need a, an amendment on the fund five forty-two, seventy, forty-seven, zero, zero, which is roadside utilities? It was accidentally put in as thirty thousand when we meant to say three thousand?
So to memorialize it, we can. So I put forward on the first read the changes that we had discussed. Just because we saw actuals versus what we think was going to happen. And so we've done it, I think, different ways both times. To memorialize it, I think that's totally fine. I always, I was, I already had it included in the second read.
Okay, so, well, I'll just make a quick motion to take the roadside utilities budget number from thirty thousand to three thousand, which is what it was originally intended to be.
Can you tell me what number that?
I'm sorry, it's five forty-two, seventy, forty-seven, zero, zero. So there was just a typo in here. Uh, page eighty-one, about halfway, roadside utilities. Five forty-two, seventy, forty-seven, zero, zero. Yes.
So Kyle, I, I know on the previous page on eighty at the bottom, the utility tax rebate telephone, or excuse me, the one right below that roadway professional services, second to the last one on the page, that was actually gonna be sixty thousand, is that right?
Yeah, so we, and so we had the, the cumulative decrease was one thousand dollars in expense for streets. And so I wrapped all of those up based on our discussion on the nineteenth into our update, so.
So you want us to vote on that one too, memorialize it?
Yes.
Well, that's what I was thinking, because that one, and then we had just a couple lines on the last one on page eighty-one. The snow and ice control professional service could have been twenty-five K. So if we wanna, if, if we can make an amendment to memorialize all three of those.
Yes, please.
At once.
Which page was that?
That is eighty-one. It's about three lines above the roadside utilities. Five four two, six six four one, zero, zero. Snow and Ice Control Professional Service. That was listed as ten thousand originally and should have been twenty-five.
Thank you. All right, so let's do this. Sean, would it be best to do them all and can we do them all at one, or do we need to do them separately?
First of all, your motion wasn't seconded, so from that standpoint, it's nothing been done with it. But the, the other part is, for, for ease and clarification, it's probably better to do it individually.
Okay.
As opposed to, if you're adding all the numbers and this number goes to that number and whatnot, to do them all individually.
All right, so let's do this. I think the motion had already failed because no one had seconded it at that time. So let's do this. I'll make a motion to, we'll start from the top, on page eighty. Fund five forty-two, thirty, forty-one, oh one, which is the roadway professional services, goes from fifty thousand to sixty thousand. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, so the next one is roadside utilities on page eighty-one, which is five forty-two, seventy, forty-seven, zero, zero. And that goes from thirty thousand to three thousand, which is what it was intended to be.
Second.
Okay? Yes, councilmember Ball.
Oh, I'm just saying aye.
Okay, all right, all, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. And remind me what page. Thank you.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so five forty, I'll make a motion to update number five forty-two, sixty-six, forty-one, zero, zero. The snow and ice control professional services from ten thousand, increasing it to twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, so we addressed those three. My other question in this one was, and I, again, I think Ben said this, on the weed and control professional services, we had come nowhere close to hitting that ten thousand number. And I think Ben, you were mentioning this, or maybe it was Jen, I apologize if it was Jen, saying that we probably wouldn't hit the ten thousand in next year either. Is that accurate, or should we keep that at ten?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, so Mayor Protem, oh, we're doing a lot of that in-house now.
Okay.
And we're looking at hiring some additional folks next year, maybe do more of that, so, yeah, I think that's.
So would five thousand be acceptable, seventy-five hundred? Okay, five. All right, so I'll make a motion to change five five three, six zero, four one, ten, which is weed control professional services, taking it from ten to five thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And then same question, Ben, on the maintenance administration overhead registration fees and memberships, the the, the question was at the last meeting about whether we'd hit seven thousand on that one.
No.
Okay, so five thousand, four thousand, three thousand?
Oh, you could probably cut it half.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to adjust that down to thirty-five hundred.
Which line?
Um, this is five forty-two, ninety, forty-nine, zero, zeros. Maintenance administration overhead registration fees, memberships. It would go from seven thousand to thirty-five hundred. Yeah, discussion.
Just a quick question, Ben. On both of these, and, and I could just be remembering wrong, but it, it feels like on some of these, you were gonna be getting bills at the end of the year. Neither of these were gonna be applicable for that.
Not for weed control officer, definitely not for that one.
Or for the maintenance admin.
I'm not tracking any other, how you maybe, like we've paid for anything like, it's like public works, so, so stuff like that.
Yeah.
Which isn't super expensive anyway.
Okay.
And we don't plan on going to any conferences.
Any other questions, comments on that one? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously as well. Anything else from Public Works and Street Operation? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the special revenue fund one eleven, which is on page eighty-four. Anything? All right. Next page eighty-five, Special Revenue Fund one fifteen. The tourism dollars. All right, next page, one sixteen, Tourism Promotion Capital Fund. Nothing? Okay, next page, one seventeen, Tourism Promotion Area Resource Fund. Okay. And next page, Special Revenue Fund one twenty, the Restricting Reserve Fund Resources. Okay. We will move on to page eighty-nine, which is the REIT One Capital Project Fund three ten. So this, I'm sure, will be, have some discussion here. Any thoughts? Okay, I'll just throw out a couple of different items here. One, and Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like even well, let me ask you, let me ask it this way. After we do all these things, how much is left in REIT one?
One point six million.
Okay, so we've got one point six left over, that's all right, I bet this mark here. Okay, so that is including a one point five million dollar transfer to the library.
Correct.
And a four hundred thousand dollar transfer for the trailhead repayment.
Correct.
Okay. That, this is just the payment.
Then this is just isolated to.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm gonna make one proposed amendment here, and that is and, and these are all three connected, so bear with me. I'm gonna make an amendment to take the library fund number to one million even and use the extra five hundred thousand again as another payment for trailhead. And then I'll explain more if that's seconded.
Second.
Okay. So my thought on this is obviously what I mentioned earlier about trying to get the city out of debt sooner. But I have three other amend, possible amendments to make up for that reduction. If, if everyone goes ahead to the Community Message Fund and the Building Contingency Fund, the mayor had put a note in the community, or excuse me, in the Building Contingency Fund about using part of that for the library. Uh, the page is one oh four. And she had made that suggestion at the bottom there, may consider reduction to seventy-five thousand. And then we also had a discussion at the last meeting about whether we wanted to leave the Community Messaging Fund alone at three thirty-five, or, excuse me, fund number three thirty-five on page one oh two, because we've never done anything with it, or at least not in the recent memory. So what I would propose that we do is, related to this amendment that I'm making, is take those two funds, transfer them over to the Library Capital Fund, and then lower the REIT by five hundred thousand so that we can make another payment to trailhead. So that is the amendment. I'll be making the other amendments later, but that's part of the reason why I'm suggesting that. Discussion.
So you have an amendment to your motion?
No, I'll be making those when we get to those, right, yeah. That's why I was suggesting the, the, taking the one point five to one. Yes, councilmember.
What's your quick math on the two funds together that you're proposing going to the Library Capital Fund?
So that would depend on how much we want to transfer over. I mean, if we did the full amount, you're looking at about three, one thirty-four plus stand by one second. Plus one oh nine, so you'd be looking at two fifty there. We already put in another fifteen from the Executive General Fund, so we'd be looking at two sixty-five. So we could make up the other two forty if we wanted to by just reducing that to, reducing the REIT transfer instead of to one to one point two five. You understand, you're following me?
Slowly.
Yes.
So one oh nine five is coming, because we're gonna get rid of the messaging board, right?
Well, that's up to all of you.
Well, yeah, I mean, that is your suggestion. Okay, and we did talk about that before. Okay, and so where is the other, what, what, what else?
So the one oh nine, and then the other one was the Building Contingency Fund, which the mayor, which is three thirty-seven, which is on page one oh four.
So you're suggesting eliminating that fund, draw to zero?
Well, if we take the one thirty-four, entire one thirty-four, yes, we could eliminate that fund. I'm not necessarily suggesting that right now, we can discuss what number that needs to be, but the, the mayor made the note down below here that we could go to seventy, we could take out seventy-five. And we could put it toward the capital fund. So I guess it's up to all of you in terms of how low you want to get that fund, if we need to get rid of it altogether. As was talked about at the last meeting, we haven't really done every, anything with it, so. Anyways, the, the motion is, and I'm open to amendments here, to, to lower the transfer to the library fund of one point five to one, and then use the other five hundred thousand as another payment to trailhead. Yes, councilmembers.
I wonder if it would be simpler and in the same spirit if we left the one point five to the library and took these other funds and moved them to trailhead, even though it's not a nice round number, but I think it still the same spirit, right? It may be easier.
I agree, but we, we have to do it in five hundred thousand dollar increments.
The payments.
Right.
The payments we do, the saving up for the payments we do not have.
Yeah.
Oh.
So you're saying just put it in the fund and hold it there?
Yes, and then as we, as we collect resources in fund three thirty-eight, we make the payments in five hundred thousand dollar increments.
So we could piecemeal some other things together if we focused on these priorities a little bit at a time, but not in the five hundred K blocks.
Right, it would just be basically sit, so it would, basically we would just be moving it to another fund and letting it sit there. Yeah.
So, so then this would stay the same, the, the one point five million from the REIT, from the REIT to the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, the, obviously the advantage in, in doing it in a five hundred thousand dollar increments is that we would save on the interest. We'd have to pay the fee upfront, obviously, but that's pale in comparison to the interest.
And it just depends on how we, what sources we draw from to get there. And so the, the five hundred thousand dollar increment, I, we shouldn't get held up on that because we can draw from other resources outside of one sole source of revenue in five thousand, five hundred thousand dollar increments. So we can, to councilmember Kurtz's point, we can piecemeal some of this together to get to those increments.
Okay. Okay, so.
Was, was the motion seconded?
Yeah, it was. So we do need to vote on, on the motion, which was to take it from one point five to one and use the five hundred in to pay as an extra payment for trailhead. Yes, councilmember Spencer.
I'd like to make amendment, an amendment to the motion. I, I would propose that we take two million from REIT one and put one in the Library Capital and one towards trailhead payoff.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah.
Rather than taking one point five, which is the number we've been talking about all along, coming out of REIT one, we would take two million out of REIT one and half would go to pay off the trailhead and half would go to the Library Capital Fund.
Which would still leave, correct me if I'm wrong, councilmember Spencer or Kyle, which would still leave one point one as the ending fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that for discussion. Discussion, councilmember Kurtz.
So I think if we're really focused on how to pay off trailhead, I still would really love to have a, just a more in-depth discussion about this in January, because I think that we can do these things. I think we're actually getting a little bit more creative with our intention with the budget, which I like. But I kind of want to, I kind of want to see it all on paper and see how it's all gonna play out. So I'm not opposed to, to doing some of these things, but I think sitting down and making sure everybody really understands where it's coming from, where it's going, how that affects some of the other bottom lines. I don't know if we're gonna get there tonight, because we only have a little bit of time left. I don't know if we're gonna get there tonight, because we only have a little bit of time left, because we have the other business to do too. So I would love to um hold off on it, not that I'm opposed to doing it, though, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Dan.
I'm I'm concerned, Kyle, about um your your projections into the future and the minimus value in this fund. Um, I'd like to have time for Kyle to be able to fed into projection of future state uh to understand what um I'm gonna say diminishing to less than half the intended ending fund balance would have impact on the future. So to Andy's point, I don't think it's uh well advised to take that action tonight without more information.
Uh, yeah, to speak to that, that that does call into question some potential items that we have on the CFP that we would then potentially have to shuffle around, that's, I'm I'm just um. I I'm anticipating, I'm not saying for sure that that would happen.
Well, and I think it's important to point out that even if even if the council were to accept councilmember Spencer's amendment here, we'd still have a a leftover balance on trailhead of four point one. I'm doing my math right, it's five hundred thousand. Uh, we did earlier, takes us to five point one, and then this would be another million, so we're down to four point one.
Yeah.
So there still would be the opportunity, I think, come the new year to figure out what we're gonna do with the rest of that four point one. It's basically just a matter of whether we want to have a conversation about doing it with a four point one or a five point one, at at least right now. Any other? Questions, thoughts? Councilmember Van Orman?
Yeah, I'm I'm, I I guess I don't have real good clarification, can you go over that one more time?
Yeah, so if you go to page eighty-nine um and you see that we are proposing to take one point five million to go to the library capital. And and that would leave us with an ending balance of one point six three four. So what I'm proposing is that we up that number going out of REIT one to two million even, and we split it between the library to library capital fund and the uh trailhead. Improvement.
So you're saying one instead of five hundred for trailhead?
Right, yeah, right, one goes to each of those funds.
That would leave, as we mentioned, one point one left over in REIT one. And it would also at least at the current moment until we get to it, take the library number to five point two.
What do you mean?
The the total amount on page ninety-eight. Because it would lower the amount coming in from REIT one from one point five to one.
Page ninety-eight.
Yeah, library capital fund.
Right, right, right.
So I mean, right right now, the council's decision was to keep the two point four million in there. You've got the beginning balance of three point one five, you've got the grant and the donations part, which we're gonna talk about, but if councilmember Spencer's motion were to pass, the current number in that fund would be five point two. Until we got to it, instead of five point seven.
Correct.
Which I know councilmember Van Orman, you were asking for a sinking fund.
To do a million.
That, yes, but right now it's it's budgeted for one point five.
Yeah, all one point five was going to library, yeah, library capital prior to my amendment, so I would be splitting the difference, but increasing that amount out of REIT by five hundred thousand.
Councilmember Curtis.
Because Sean, if I wanted to make a motion to table this, is now the time to do that? Okay, I would like to ma- make a motion to table this until the next meeting. Until we have a chance to get from Kyle um numbers on paper with some of these proposals that Mayor Partem has.
Okay.
Second.
I'll.
Okay, so the motion is to just table this discussion, the cap, the REIT one discussion.
So I said this discussion, I probably need to be more clear, um, the moving around of money to pay for trailhead and and the library, like they're all sort of intertwined, and I know that this is the budget part, but I feel like we need we've gotten way more in-depth than I think some of us were prepared to do, and we're running out of time tonight. Um, so that's my ask, um, want to have the discussion, but I don't, I don't know that we're prepared to make a couple million dollar decision tonight.
So um, I I want to make sure we clarify this, so if we if we were to approve your amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, basically, the conversation would stop on the rest of the budget?
No, I think I think the the motion to table is relative to this one topic.
Just REIT one.
Yeah.
Okay, correct. Is that what you're thinking?
I was thinking, I was thinking specific to trailhead and the library and how we're gonna fund or not fund those, so like when he had um mentioned uh community messaging fund and all those other funds that you've mentioned, I want to talk about those. So if I need to say the motion differently to encompass all the suggestions that he made and that Jen made, that's my intent.
Your your motion to table is to table the motions that are pending on the on the floor now.
Yes.
So, right, so all you're doing is saying is you're making a motion to table those motions until the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, that's, and then I think that's what you've done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so the motion is to table the motions until the next meeting, and it was seconded by councilmember Dan. Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I'll I'll speak against the the motion, um, I think um we're not making final decisions on two million, one point five million tonight, just like it's been said uh previously. We can always do a budget amendment in the new year, but I think this uh signals to the citizens that we are uh serious about uh working towards paying off the trailhead debt and uh the compromise that we're trying to make here, so I I I don't think anything's set in stone, and we can still have this conversation at the next meeting or in January, um, even if we make these changes now.
Uh, councilmember Paul, and then we'll come, councilmember Curtis.
Yeah, I I appreciate that intent, but honestly, I'm feeling like this is very convoluted, and I I need more time to let this gel, and I would like to talk to Kyle and get more, get it clarified, I mean, I I just, it's too convoluted to do tonight.
Councilmember Curtis.
I think that was my point, is that um I think there's some confusion on the dais about what we would or wouldn't be voting for and what the impacts would or wouldn't be.
Right.
And it seems prudent to make sure that we all understand what we're voting for tonight.
Councilmember Dan.
I again believe confidently that the changes to the ending fund balance have significant impacts in the future, and that is not revealed in the discussions tonight.
The only um, the only challenge I have with the um or with the motion is that we still have about ten minutes, well, five, five or ten minutes here. And I think there are other parts of this that we might be able to get through pretty quickly. So I'm wondering uh if we can, if if the motion is approved and we can continue to have the discussion at the next meeting, if that would prevent us from continuing on um to the other parts of the budget and throwing out perhaps. Yes, Kyle.
Point of clarification is would it require a special meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah. Yes, councilmember Kennedy.
We have done, practically every year, we've done special meetings, and and I'm certainly in favor of that, it gives us a little more time to think about it. Realizing whatever we decide on tonight, if we were to say yes to this or not, we could make a budget amendment later on down the road. I just feel that we get too confusing right now, that I'll go home and say, what the hell happened? I'm following it, I I I like a lot of it, but I think that, you know, let's have a special meeting, there's other things to go over, which I think will definitely take some time for discussion, there'll be the pros and cons back and forth, so I'm in favor of special meeting.
Okay, let me make sure I uh restate the motion correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, any, the motion is to table the discussion, to table the previous motions on REIT one.
Correct.
Table the previous motions, it's not just specific to REIT one, it's about all the money.
Right. Yeah.
Tied up with.
So it's basically gonna, we basically would end our conversation tonight, then, yes.
There's a conversation about something not related to trailhead.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I do think it's important just to clarify that we may want to have a discussion about all of these things at the next meeting, at a special meeting, but in order to tee them up, this may prevent us from doing that, that's my only concern. Is so, wh- what I'm saying is that I might be in favor of of the the motion to table this, but I would like to try to get through a few other parts of this, because we may come up on something that says, well, let's talk about that in the next meeting too. And so that Kyle has marching orders in terms of what we're we're looking at, so as long as we can continue that discussion after we approve this, I'm fine with the motion is.
And if we're gonna go till nine thirty, we only have five minutes.
Yeah, I know.
So we're kind of, we're kind of almost done anyway.
Yeah. Yes, councilmember Kennedy.
I I always get very nervous when we get to the point is that we're more concentrate on the clock than we're concentrate on what we're trying to accomplish, uh, once again, I'm more than comfortable going to another special meeting, because I think whatever comes up there, we have still plenty of time to bring it up before uh final vote for the end of December.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to table the discussion on re- table the motions, previous motions and the discussion on REIT one. All those in favor, please say aye. You said yes, okay.
I'm a little concerned when you say previous.
The previous two motions that were on the table.
Motion, so we're not just on REIT one anymore, we're about the whole.
No, we're moving on from REIT one.
The two motions, the motion and the amendment before mine.
Okay, got it, all right, you got me.
Okay, so five to two, I believe is the final. All right, so we will table REIT one, so let's see what we can get through in the next five-ish minutes. Kyle, do you have enough information on that all discussion? Okay, all right, so REIT two, any discussion on REIT two? Councilmember Kennedy.
We have four minutes to go, and it's necessary, I believe you need to make a a motion to extend it.
We don't, we still have a half hour.
Oh, I thought it was only to nine thirty.
It's nine thirty right now.
Just on the budget.
Yeah, just, we were just talking about as a target for the budget, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything on REIT two? Okay, we will move to street capital fund, anything on the street capital fund? Three twelve, which is on page ninety-six. Nothing? One once? And twice? All right, we will move on to Harvard Road Mitigation Fund, which is page ninety-seven. One once? Twice? All right, page ninety-eight, library capital fund. Councilmember Curtis.
I feel like this ties into the.
Right.
Taping, okay.
So my question on this then is the the motion we approved was on REIT one. And that was, that's what I was getting at, is whether it included the conversation on this, so are there? Can you help us here, Sean? Are we allowed to talk about this based on that motion?
Let me ask this question first, is there gonna be a special meeting next week, is that the intent?
It sounds like it, yeah.
Okay, um, I I would say just end the discussion on the budget now, move on to the rest of items on the agenda, and then you can discuss at the next meeting for the special meeting from this point forward and everything else that was tabled.
Yeah.
I I am, I I apologize, um, there may be some further discussion that impacts what I deliver to you.
That's what I was thinking.
So I I, with all due respect, I would like to kind of ancillaryly discuss the rest of the funding sources in here, not discussing REIT one uh or the transfer in from the general fund to see if there's any other direction I need to get us to where we think we might. You might want me to provide you additional information, and I'm speci- I'm speaking specifically to what I have heard uh from council regarding the commerce grant.
Okay, so.
You're very delicate putting that out, thank you.
Discussion then, I guess, on three thirty.
I mean, you could answer, you're never precluded from answering Kyle's questions.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Ball.
On three thirty, um, uh, can I ask Janie a question?
Okay.
Janie, um, how how is it looking on that grant, do you have any update or anything?
It's just the legislative session in January.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The mayor. Mark will be there. Public library in Washington. He's our lobbyist, she'll be acting on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yeah, this has been an issue for me for a long period of time, my motion would be as if we strike off the nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand commerce grant and also the five hundred thousand donation on it, and where I come from is just absolutely a an accounting.
Before we, before we continue, uh, you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Spencer's second, okay, councilmember Kennedy, sorry.
Everybody heard me.
Anything more you want to add on that?
I think it's covered it.
Okay.
So we have a new motion?
Yes, so the motion now is to strike the grants from the commerce and the donations out of the budget, that doesn't mean they go away, it just means we're not budgeting for them um based on councilmember Kennedy's motion. Discussion.
Well, I would definitely agree, I, if we haven't received the grant and we won't know until January, and we haven't received necessarily the no no donations, not that we won't, but we can always add these back into the budget at that time.
Councilmember uh Curtis.
We haven't received property tax either, so I'm just pointing out that it's.
We do know that that one for sure comes every, they end.
As long as they pay.
November.
Councilmember Kennedy.
If I might add, um, very good point, we we do figure the property taxes in, but we do that because we get it every year. Okay, we pretty much know what that number is going to be, we can extrapolate that out, the same thing when it comes to sales tax, we know what those numbers are pretty close, so it's gonna be guaranteed on it, these, I'm very confident, I think we're going to benefit from both of these, but we don't have it. If we don't have it, it shouldn't be in the budget.
Councilmember Dan.
Um, Mark, could you um tell me if there's been any grant awarded by Commerce that has not been delivered?
For the life of this particular program, um, one hundred percent of the grant recommendations that they have made have been funded.
So we do that, they do deliver on their grants every year.
For the, for the life of this particular program, that's correct, yes.
Mark, do you know off the top of your head what the state budget deficit is in the next session?
Something in the neighborhood of ten to twelve billion um is what the target deficit is, or the estimated deficit.
And that's my concern, if if we weren't going into a but legislative session with a twelve million, a twelve billion dollar hole, I would feel a lot better about funding this, or or at least can it counting for it in the budget. Again, this is, this is not to say this goes away, it's just a matter of whether it's in the budget or not, and I I think to a point that councilmember Kennedy made um a couple of meetings ago, if we budget for this and then we proceed with the construction and these numbers don't come through, then we have to fi- figure out a way to backfill it, um, and that puts us in an even more precarious position, if these numbers do come through, then it gets us libraries sooner. So I'm gonna speak in favor of councilmember Kennedy's motion.
So so if I can clarify, just hopefully to to uh bring everybody's mind to ease a little bit. On the on the revenue side, there is no risk, whether it's in or out, right? What we're simply putting forward a a plan that we believe is is feasible. On the expenditure side, yes, you want to be more careful. Um, on the revenue side, it's it's less of a concern, um, and so if council's prerogative is to uh remove the grant proceeds and remove the donation proceeds, uh, to your point, if those end up materializing and we receipt those, uh, we we just have revenue that we've realized that is unbudgeted.
Any other thoughts on this one? Yes, councilmember.
Comment about a name, this dollar amount. As far as I'm concerned, as someone, has always been false hope in a lot of people's conversation is to say, well, we have the five point eight, we have six million dollars, we also have the million dollars, nine hundred and thirty-seven, we have the five hundred thousand dollars, so we're really got nine and a half million dollars. That's not true, that's not true, we have five point eight million dollars, six million dollars, who we're talking about, if they were to move forward to the library on it. This is a number that I, the state is in debt upside down ten billion dollars. To me, this is one of those that they don't turn down, because this is what I consider warm and fuzzies. This is warm and fuzzies where the politicians sit there and go, no, you know, I'm not gonna fund a lot, but I'm gonna fund this. So I'm I'm pretty confident that we're going to get that, and I'm pretty confident we can raise some additional money, but we don't have it. Okay, we can't buy the new car with the new payment if we don't have it in our budget, guaranteed coming in, I'm trying to deal with common sense here.
A hundred percent agree. Just to clarify, this is not on the expenditure side of the budget, so we're not proposing, um, al- although there's a requisite, uh, expenditure to the equivalent amount, that's not what we're discussing. This, these two particular line items are not on the expenditure side. So, again, from a revenue perspective, if, if council's prerogative is to take these two out, it has negligible impact on the, the plan to design and construct the library.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to, uh, remove the nine hundred and thirty-seven, uh, thousand number from the grant for Commerce and the five hundred thousand donation on, uh, government, um, number in the, uh, Capital Project Fund three thirty for the library. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes four, three. All right, so, um, we've got twelve budgets left. About eight of the twelve, I think, are gonna be ones that we blow through. Um, does the council wanna try to get through them all, or Kyle, do you need us to get through them all before the next meeting?
Um, I can, scenarios based on the information now that we. That is council's prerogative, so.
What is the, um, prerogative of everyone? Councilmember Kurtz.
I just think we have other general business and we've got, um, people here and, um, to be confirmed and it'd be nice to move on.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, does anybody have any other budget amendments? Wendy does.
I do. Um, but it's only if we have funds available. And that is for the arboretum to take off of the wish list and put on the bathrooms and the three gazebo's over the now sitting picnic tables. That would be in the amount of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Bathrooms range from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. The picnic table gazebo's were estimated at ten thousand each.
So I'm wondering, Kyle, first of all, was that an official motion? Or it just, you wanna throw it out there, just discussion?
Out there, yeah.
So Kyle, I'm wondering, could we, when we come back next week, can we add that to the list of things we wanna try to figure out a place for or discuss? Okay, and nobody has any other changes to any other parts of the budget? Okay, well, maybe we didn't need to go through them all, one by one. All right, okay, so we're good then on the budget. Next week.
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Ball.
Do we know when this special meeting is going to be?
Let's, um, let's discuss that in, when we go through our workshop schedule.
Upcoming agenda items.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve general business, uh, consent agenda items, uh, ten A, B, C, D, E, F.
And G.
Uh, I, I believe, uh, Councilmember Ball wanted G, H, I, and J going to.
It won't take long. It won't take long.
So just A through F. Second by Councilmember Kurtz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven, zero. All right, now we're up to general business, uh, item eleven A, which we will go, go through the ten G through, um, J for ones first. Um, so the, uh, make a motion for the agreement for recreation services for the Skyhawks Soccer Tots Camps.
Second.
All right, well, uh, second by Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, it, this applies to all four of these. I'm just curious, um, are the, it, Skyhawks, uh, and Challengers, are they two different, um, are they two different nonprofits, or what are they? I mean, are they, I, I guess I'm not clear on, um, what they're.
So we, we, I think still have, uh, Mikel Stevens available to answer those questions. The, the answer to that question is yes, they're different organizations, uh, but to tell you the specifics, if Mikel is still on, can you clarify that?
Uh, yeah. So Challengers and then Skyhawks are two different organizations. Challengers is a two-week organization, two-week soccer camp organization that comes out. And they, your two-week camp, and they split their revenue eighty, twenty. We get twenty percent as the city, we provide a location. And then the Skyhawks has three groups underneath them, so there's Skyhawks Sports Camps, Skyhawks Day Camps, and Sky, and then Supertots. Supertots is for younger kids ages eighteen months to five years old, and they do an assortment of sports. And then the other two organizations, Skyhawks Day Camps, you camp throughout the summer. Um, and then Skyhawk Sports Camps, you sport camps throughout the spring, summer, and fall. And then we do a revenue split with them as well. The same thing, it's an eighty, twenty split where the city receives twenty percent of revenue, we provide space and locations for those camps.
Okay, and this is all soccer, correct?
It is an assortment of sports, so like the Skyhawks Sports Camps, they do everything from soccer to flag football, pickleball, tennis, golf. Day camps is a lot of when school, or school's out of session for the summer. So trips, they'll go to take kids to the pool, they'll start at the school, at the park, do activities, some of it's sports, some of it's crafts, some of it's STEM. And then the soccer, or the Supertots is the more sports for those younger age groups, like I said, the eighteen months to five years old.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor of ten G, the Agreement for Recreation Services with Skyhawks Soccer Tots Camps, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. I'm gonna make a motion, I assume your questions have been answered.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve then general, um, business items, ten H, I, and J.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seven, zero pass, all right. We're on to general business, uh, action items. We'll entertain a motion for, uh, the reappointment of Kim Gerard to position two of the Library Board of Trustees.
I'll make a mo-, oh.
Okay. Uh, are you making the motion?
I thought you had voiced the motion. Um, I will then voice the motion to reappoint Kim Gerard.
All right.
Uh, recommend, uh, confirm the mayor's appointment.
All right, it was, uh, and you're seconding.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
All right, Councilmember Dunn, um, made the motion, Councilmember Dunn, or excuse me, Ball. It's been a long night. Uh, seconded. Any discussion? Kim, do you wanna come up and say anything?
Um, I just wanna say it's been a great, um, term that it, I've attended more council meetings than I expected over the last few years. But, um, what I've seen is that the city works together for the citizens, and that's what I love about helping Janie support the library, being on the board.
Okay.
It's where I, I moved here in two thousand nineteen and COVID happened, and I was looking for a place where I could fit in and use my expertise and the Library Trustee Position came open and been good. Good to know my community.
If you remember, Kim was a school librarian for many, many, spent a valuable access to the board.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
Thank you, Kim.
All right. Um, the motion's on the floor. All those in favor of the reappointment of Kim Gerard to the Library Board of Trustees, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the reappointment, uh, fails four to three. Um, all right, council comments, uh, number twelve on the agenda. Any council comments?
I'm gonna ask, uh, for the explanation, uh, for those who are offered to, to reject the appointment, is there any justification of that?
What was the?
It's four to three.
Four to three.
Can I? I'm sorry.
Sean is.
Can I please see the hands on that vote again, so I can get it?
Yes, the four was Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Spencer, myself, Councilmember Van Orman. The three were, uh, Councilmember Dunn, Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you.
Sean, is there, uh, um, need to?
It's up to you guys.
Do that.
Councilmember's asking for clarification.
Okay, yeah. Anybody wish to comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Comments? We're up to council comments now. Do, do you wanna make a council?
Oh, are we still talking about the appointment, the reappointment?
I don't think they want to talk about it, so, no.
Well, it's outrageous.
Okay, do you wanna make a council comment?
With, uh, are we just a basic council comment?
Yeah, it's number twelve on the agenda.
Uh, well, first of all, that last vote is outrageous. I don't understand it. Um, Kim's a wonderful citizen. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm stunned about that. Um, I would also like to make a comment, um, with regard to our last meeting two weeks ago, um, it was brought up that, um, hmm, there was some falsehood stated, and I wasn't sure if that was directed at myself or another individual, um. I made the comment that this was in regard to the conversation about the restaurant that we do not have yet. Um, that there are no restaurants at the county-owned golf courses here in the city, and, um, apparently, um, that was perceived by some that I was calling another council member a liar. I was not. I was not meaning to disparage anybody. It was just a fact that there are no, maybe I should have clarified, sit-down restaurants in the county golf courses. So, um, I apologize if I hurt anybody's feelings, but in my mind, a restaurant is where you go in and you sit down and you order from a server, not going up to a window and getting a burger. That is not a restaurant. So, um, I wanted to clarify that. And again, I am sorry if I disparaged anybody. I did not mean to. Um, tip.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I am concerned that we've talked a lot about transparency this year, and to suddenly have four people vote to not pick somebody that the mayor recommended for appointment without any explanation.
No discussion.
And no discussion is absolutely not transparent, and in my opinion, lacks integrity. Um, and lacks courage. Um, I don't think it shows leadership. I don't think it shows anything that I believe this council should stand for in our community. If you have a reason why somebody shouldn't be appointed, you should have the courage as a leader in this community to say why. Um, and I'm disappointed that there was no discussion about why, there was no discussion about qualifications other than what she said. And you have someone who's served for two years, who's a librarian, and you guys voted to not have her serve on our Board of Trustees without explanation at all. It is disappointing.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Disappointing without a doubt, yeah. I have no challenge in making a comment because my comments will mirror what I've said in the past. What we have is a council, seven individuals elected to make decisions, but to be able to do that, we need the committees and stuff to assist us with that. What we don't need is competitors, what we need is completers to help us do that. And when we get individuals that come forward and get into the name-calling, threaten they're gonna sue the city, things of this sort here, I as an individual start lacking confidence, no matter what their qualifications are, start lacking confidence when I observe that.
Like, I can.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Why didn't you say that during discussion? Why didn't we talk about those things during discussion? It's, you're only talking now because I asked.
No, I've been, I've been waiting to be able to say something. It went so fast that sufficient time is not allowed for the council to think about it. So I was waiting for a turn to be able to say something. You brought it up, so I was prepared to say something. I would not leave this room without giving my explanation.
Well, I think the proper time to do that is during the discussion before a vote. Because your opinion may impact mine and my vote.
All right, any other council comments? Okay. Uh, we are on to, uh, no public hearings or appeals. We are up to resolution, resolution fourteen A.
Mayor Potem, before this is read in, I, I wanted to clarify that the, um, items on the proposed, uh, priorities list do not include an item that was introduced at the last meeting. I di-, I didn't feel, uh, it was appropriate for me to assume that that was a priority without it being discussed uh, among council, and so that is related to the, uh, news article that you provided regarding the impact on the RV and heavy truck industry. And so I proposed some language in the draft that I sent out, but that item is not included in the final list, and so I wanted to give the council the opportunity to discuss whether or not to include, uh, that item or not before the resolution was read.
Okay, um, discussion. Yes, Councilmember Van Orman.
A significant source of ourselves tax is from RVs. And, uh, yes, it should be in the legislative priority list. Without that funding, we're not gonna be able to do a lot.
Mark, did you, can you remind me, did you have, um, suggested language that you sent? My computer just went dead, so.
So I labeled it as a possible addition, and it reads, uh, support leg-, legislation replacing California Air Resources Board Emissions Standards with, uh, federal emissions standards to comply with the U.S. Clean Air Act in Washington. The issue is that the automatic, um, triggers that are associated with our, uh, state tying itself to the California Air Resources Board Emissions Standards, um, are what's creating the issue. Um, and so, you know, the, the other possible options are, uh, asking for a moratorium of the implementation or something like that. But this, this was the addition that I proposed.
Okay, I'm gonna make a.
Before you do that, let Kelsey read the resolution.
Okay, go ahead, Kelsey.
Resolution number twenty-four dash two seventy, a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake. Sorry, the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, adopting legislative priorities for use during the state legislature's twenty-twenty-five regular session and any subsequent special sessions.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve it and then amend it?
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash two seven zero.
Second.
Okay, uh, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Uh, now I'll make a motion to amend, uh, the legislative priority list with what Mark just said. I can't remember it all, Mark, will you repeat that?
Absolutely. Uh, support legislation replacing the California Air Resources Board Emissions Standards with federal emissions standards to comply with the U.S. Clean Air Act in Washington.
As Mark stated. That's the motion. Now, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Spencer. Discussion, Councilmember Ball.
So is that in here now in what you sent us? It's not, right?
It is not.
Okay, okay, cause I have some other questions I have with regard to this legislative agenda, okay.
Which we can get to, but the motion right now is just to add that.
Right, right, right.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Gotcha.
I'd be more in favor of the moratorium language, um, that you mentioned at the end there, um, for what it's worth.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to add that language that Mark just said to the legislative priority list. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Councilmember Ball. Okay, uh, motion carries four, three. Now we're back to the original resolution, which includes that language. Councilmember Ball, did you have a question?
Okay, there's a couple of things, and I, I can't find it right now, but it, on the hard copy you gave us last week, okay, expansion of, uh, I think in here it says travel lanes, and you'd said tra-, traffic lanes before. Um, I mean, is there a significant difference there?
Um, I, I don't think material. I think the, the concept is that the focus is on the expansion of the throughput, uh, on, on I ninety. Um, it was, if we wanna change it from travel to traffic, we can do that.
I'm good with the word.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was a, um, you know, a significant thing, you know, if we should. Okay, and then the other one, what happened to support legislation limiting the ownership of single-family residential properties by certain corporate entities? I don't see that in here.
That is one that through the discussion, um, we chose to, if you look at the, um, let's see. So if you'll look at the replacement language, which is the second bullet, it says, support legislation promoting homeownership by individuals and single families. So we had talked about using positive language versus targeting from a negative perspective, and so the proposed replacement is what I just read.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on resolution twenty-four dash two seven zero? All right, all those in favor, please, do we need a public comment on this? Okay, uh, we'll do public comment, um, on resolution twenty-four dash two seven zero. Any public comments? Anybody online or in chambers? Nobody? Okay, all right, all those in favor, uh, Nobody, okay, all right, all those in favor of approving resolution twenty-four dash two seven zero, please say aye. All opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, no ordinances, no emergency appeals. Yes.
I'd make a motion, we extend the meeting to probably ten ten, to lock citizen comments, sufficient time.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor of extending to ten ten, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, pass the seven zero, thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, no ordinances, no emergency ordinances, interruption of upcoming agenda items. All right, um. Budget review is on here for December third, we got through all of that, December seventeenth, we're tentatively talking about the length of the meetings. We're gonna add a special meeting to December tenth, is that correct? Councilmember Kurtz.
Oh. Oh, we just found that thing, I wasn't trying to ask about that.
Okay, I'll make a motion, uh, that we meet, um, at six P M. on December tenth for the purposes of the budget, twenty twenty-five budget. And, yes, I just made a motion to meet at six P M. on December tenth, Tuesday, December tenth, it's the right date, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And you had a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, who's the second?
Just, just.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion.
Um, yeah, I kinda wanted to go to the legislative thing, and it's the same night at six.
Yeah. Um, what about Monday? How does everyone feel about Monday?
What day is that?
December ninth?
It'd be the nine.
Be unavailable.
Uh.
I'm not, I can't, Santa Cruz, sorry.
Your what?
Santa Cruz. Oh, 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 not available.
Oh, oh. Yeah, available.
We could do, uh, Wednesday, I will need to join remotely, but we can do Wednesday.
It, it, you know, it's not critical, I just, you know, I don't know who else, anybody else was going to that, or?
What, are you talking about the G S I one?
The what?
The G S I one?
This is the one that we've scheduled, uh.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, at the library, yeah. So, I mean, if nobody else is, I, I'll live.
Is the city staff gonna be there, are they gonna be here, like, who was gonna be the presenter for the city?
I will be there, um, but you're in capable hands here for that discussion, so.
What are, what's the hours of it again?
Six to seven thirty.
Is everybody available on Wednesday?
How about Wednesday?
Sounds like Tuesday's still an option, though, right?
Yeah. We can do Tuesday starting at seven, and then that way we don't have too much fun overlap.
We're gonna get through everything?
I would hope so. All right, I'll amend my motion to do Tuesday at seven.
Seven to when?
Seven to nine. That work? Yep. So the amended motion is Tuesday, December tenth, seven to nine. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, so we're set for next week, anything else that we want to add to this?
Need to vote on the original motion now, because it's amended.
Oh, yes, okay, so we're gonna vote on the motion now, uh, which has been amended to do December tenth, Tuesday at seven P M. All those, yeah, discussion?
If it's a special meeting and we advertise at this time, we can't extend, F Y I.
That's a good point. Well, but that might be a good thing, cuz health work says to be done by nine. How does everyone feel about that? Nine or ten?
Nine's fine.
All right. Let's keep it at nine. All right, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously, thank you. Anything else to add onto council workshops? Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
They're not necessarily to. Add on to workshops, but two things, um. For the December seventeenth, uh, gender preparation, can we have all the fun things at the beginning so that, like, the Girl Scouts and the Police Department, their families are all here, and we don't. Burden them with all of our, whatever we're gonna do after until eleven, like we did last year? Can we just do the fun stuff really early and?
We, we can make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my other ask is that we, um. Discuss at one of the upcoming meetings when we're gonna do our next town hall, and what, um, an agenda might be for that, so it doesn't have to be. I just want a town hall at some point. The opportunity to do that again.
Yeah, and I, I might suggest that, um, whatever date that is, that you may invite the Community Engagement Commission to, uh, join that conversation, cuz I know that they're interested in, in doing another one, they were just concerned about the. Duration between the two, so. That might be a good opportunity to co-host that conversation.
One thing I was gonna add on here, uh, Mark, for, uh, December seventeenth. Is a renewal or discussion about the Ordinance Review Committee, which expires at the end of the year. So we are still meeting, we're still going through some things, we've had some scheduling difficulties over the past couple of weeks. Um, but we may need an extension on trying to get through all those ordinances. Um, so if we can just add that to the December seventeenth meeting, shouldn't take very long, but.
We will include it.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, the length of meetings discussion, I'm wondering, um, cuz I don't wanna talk about length of meetings, it may be a long meeting, maybe January.
Does that currently have a date, Kelsey, a date certain?
Just tentatively for the seventeenth.
Of December, or, and so you're proposing to move in January, okay, let's, let's maybe put it on the second January meeting, okay.
Okay, anything else? All right. We, go ahead, Councilmember.
Why don't we put that in the first meeting in January, cuz there's nothing on there right now?
I don't have it in front of me, if there's an open space, we certainly can.
Yeah, there's nothing. Listed, um, you have January sixteenth, tentative recycling services. A recycling service, I should say, so we could do the length of meetings, the first meeting of the year.
Let's change that to the, to the first meeting in Ju-
Okay. Uh, anything else for the council workshops? All right, we will move on to, uh, citizen comments, just a reminder, you have three minutes, uh, for citizen comments. Uh, I have three of them here, and if anybody online wants to comment, please just raise your hand, and we will. Uh, get to you after the comments in person, we will start with, uh, Kim Gerard.
Gonna speak, but there was an implication that I threatened to sue the city, which is not how I operate in the universe. I would not have done that, no matter how I was at the shenanigans that were going on regarding the city council and the library. Um, so I don't know how you heard that I threatened to sue the city, but that's just not. How I, I live my life. Threatening to sue people isn't really not on my radar, I believe, in this process, and that things play out as they will. Um, so. I just felt like I needed to stand up and say that in public.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, Sue Hamblin.
Four, three, four, three. Four, three, you ask yourself, every time there's a vote that has anything to do with the library. Four, three, kinda makes you wonder, where do these four people get their information about the library and what goes on, and what goes on at the board meetings? It wa- I kinda ask myself, is there a playbook? You know, being involved in sports, there's always a playbook, and sometimes the playbooks, I believe it's on page nine thirty-one. Is that the right page, where they talk about. Eliminating the libraries, or the power that the libraries have, or the fact that maybe you shouldn't be reading, or the library shouldn't have some of these books in it. What about if these, you know, they go, yeah, we gotta get rid of the Bible in the library. How about any other book that might be objectionable to other people? Oh, wow. Well, you know, with four, three, we might have that control, so that the library no longer is. A place for the public, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, Brad Hamblin.
You guys are disappointing. Very disappointing, four, three, as Sue just said, every time it comes four, three. I wonder who's influencing those votes, I have suspicions. Not gonna say anything about. That. But you wonder. You definitely wonder, you guys made a serious mistake, this woman is invaluable to the board. Invaluable, her experience in public education in a library, and setting up libraries. And administering libraries, you people made a serious mistake, did you even attempt? To find out what her contributions are to the Board of Trustees? As the president of the Board of Trustees, I can tell you her contributions are invaluable. But you don't care. Four of you do not care, cuz you're operating on an agenda. And your agenda, from my point of view, is to get rid of those people who stood up for the freedom to read during the. Book ban contra- controversy that we all experienced three or four years ago. You can shake your head, Councilman Kennedy, all you want to. You weren't on the council when that was going on, but you voted no in this particular case. This is ridiculous. To call yourself nonpartisan politicians representing this city. And representing the citizens of this city. I wonder, do you really? Believe you are representing the citizens of this. City when you do something like this? I seriously doubt it, if you talk to the citizens of this city, they would recommend this woman nine times over. It's ridiculous. It should not have happened, but it did. And I hope the whole city cares about it. Because this is ridiculous.
All right, thank you very much. Any? Um.
How do you do that with citizen governments?
Staff can make us in the stomach, right? Yeah, yeah. How much, what?
I make.
How much time do you need, Janie? Okay.
I just wanted to let you guys know, as a director and from a staffing perspective, and as a, from the library. Kim is invaluable. We do not have many library board members who are former librarians. Kim put just as many hours into the library project over this past summer as I did, and she was not paid for that time. I will feel a significant impact not having her on the library anymore, I'm very disappointed, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who wishes to make a comment? Okay, let's, uh, I will make a motion to extend the meeting to ten fifteen.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilmember Kurtz, all those in favor, please say aye. Passes seven zero, okay, um. If the person online would just tell us who they are, uh, and if they're resident of the city, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. And council members, this evening, I also am very disappointed in your vote regarding Kim Gerard. As was previously stated, you are to be a nonpartisan committee, and in looking over Kim's qualifications. I can't see, based on fact-based data, any reason why you would not. Continue to allow her to serve on the library board. I also am very disappointed that the members of council did not speak up as to why they would not approve her for appointment. Um, I also believe that this does not speak to transparency of our council members. And I'm wondering if the reason why the four members of council who voted not to appoint Kim. Did so because she was vocal in her disagreement. With the council regarding library matters, and if you're not going to be open. To other opinions and information. I don't think that you genuinely serve this public in a, in the way that you ought to serve them. So I'm very disappointed, um. And I don't know where this is all going to end up, but I do believe that the citizens of this community need to know what happened here tonight, thank you for your time.
And for the record, that was Lynn Atkins, who's a city resident. Uh, anybody else online? Nope, okay. Okay, unless there's anything further, we will, uh, adjourn with a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.